Calling this Board of Supervisors September 7th, 2021 meeting to order. You'll all rise for the invocation by Pastor John and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you will, please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Lord, we come before you today to handle items that are presented. And Lord, I just ask for a special blessing upon this time that you would give the Board of Supervisors wisdom beyond their years, discretion, a heart of understanding, ears to hear, and that you would give the public, Lord, the same, that we would move toward items that would and resolutions that will help us to move forward in all that we do as a county. Be with them in the discussion, be with them during this time, and, Lord, we just ask for your blessing and for humble hearts as we move through this time, in Jesus's name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to call for an executive session to be held September 20th, 2021 at 9:00 a.m.?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second for a discussion, and there is none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Committee of Legislative Reports, Supervisor Langenfeld.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. I attended the Arizona Water Conference down in Phoenix, August 25th through August 27th. On September 14th, I will be attending a Mojave County Water Authority meeting, as well as a meeting with Senator Mark Kelly concerning the ongoing Wallahpi Tribe water During our next board meeting on September 16th, we'll be bringing some additional water analysis to the board and executive session from Riley Carlisle, the attorney that the board has hired to examine the proposed GSC water transfer to Queen Creek. And just to let everybody in the audience know, our next Mojave County West Basin Water Users Study Committee meeting will be held on December, or excuse me, September 21st at the Arizona State Senate. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the Workforce Development Board meeting in person.
Yay.
Yay. So it was nice to be at a meeting in person. You can get the feel of the room. You can see the expression on other people's faces. It was a good meeting, and we had some good discussion, got to talk to the ant farm construction owner that was sitting next to me, who told me what about his business and that they were going to go into the crane business also, so that was rather interesting. But thank you.
Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. I also attended the Workforce Development meeting, and it's the first time I've seen Supervisor Gould very quiet, surprisingly. And then I also attended the CSA Executive Board meeting telephonically.
Supervisor James.
Nothing this morning.
County Manager.
Good morning, Sir Chairman, Board members. I have a couple of items, starting with the original, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program that came to Mojave County back in March. Just a quick update on that. If you recall, the county did receive approximately $6.5 million. That was for helping folks that needed help with the rent and utilities. At the time, we partnered with the state Department of Economic Security to implement that program. We requested two FTEs to help us get the board out, publicize the program, and assist people with their applications. So we requested some admin funds for that purpose. To date, 1,129 applications have been submitted. Of those, 444 have been approved. $2.31 million has been dispensed, along with the $315,000, excuse me, in admin costs. So a total of $2.6 million has been utilized of the total fund, and $3.8 million remains that is eligible through September 30th of next year, 2022. Quick update, as far as the employees or the COVID-19 impact on employees. I have not updated you for a bit of time, so from the beginning of this fiscal year 2022, we've had 38, I'll call them cases where, or exposures. Of those 12 positive cases have resulted. And so, again, that is since July 3rd of this year, which is the beginning of the fiscal year. And four people, obviously many have used their own PTO time to quarantine, but four people have utilized the advanced PTO program that the board approved recently. And last but not least, as far as vacancies are concerned, I've been keeping you current on the status of that. So we have 99 vacancies in the county employment pool, and that covers public health, public work, development services, county attorneys, assessors, practically every department, sheriff's office in a significant way. And when you add the Superior Court, that would be including the clerk of the Superior Court and probation, you add 29 to that. So we, today, as we speak, we have 128 vacancies in the county that we're working on filling those positions, and where the number, if you recall from the last board meeting and the number and the board meeting before, that number is unfortunately not decreasing, it is increasing. So just FYI, and that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman and Board members.
Thank you. Move on to the county, or the call of the public. Armin Stange?
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Armin Stanga, 4321 South Cavalry Road in Fort Mojave, Arizona. And I've seen that the road department is doing a traffic count on Valencia. Valencia is not that much used as a road. They all come from the north side of Cavalry Road through Dunlap and going down to Camp Mojave. The road department should count the traffic north side of my property and the south side of my property. This way, they get an accurate traffic count on Cavalry Road. And then the other thing what I have is, I don't know if it's appropriated or not, but I keep on hearing that the county is going after the business on 95 in regards of advertising and everything. Why is the county wasting their time and effort on the businesses what pay taxes? Why are they not cleaning up the neighborhoods? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris Rodardi.
Chris Rodardi, Kingman, Chairman and Members. The right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated, so states our precious Fourth Amendment to the Constitution. Another amendment I've always liked is the Ninth, which states, "The enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people." It's kind of a catch-all, making sure all liberties are protected, not just those expressly mentioned. Why, may you ask, is this radical redhead once again standing before us quoting our founding documents? Mojave County is attempting to declare us a healthcare haven, protected from the claws and snares of agencies, governments, businesses, or organizations demanding inoculations, vaccine passports, proof of health status, and other draconian measures. Sadly, none of this matters unless AZ Statute 36787 is repealed. Have you read it? It's chilling. Every public servant needs to know about this. It's been on the books as a result of 9/11, and it gives the public health authority, in the case of a declared state of emergency by the governor, wherein there lies an imminent threat from an illness related to a pandemic. Does that sound familiar? And it gives the Health Department the power to mandate vaccines, isolate and quarantine persons they believe to be a threat, ration medications, mandate medical examinations, all assisted by local law enforcement and the National Guard. Article II, Section 8 of the Arizona Constitution also states, quote, "No person shall be disturbed in his private affairs or his home invaded without authority of law." Well, Statute 36787 is law, and until this dangerous draconian unconstitutional law is repealed, no resolution with the intent by Mojave County or any other government body to protect individual healthcare freedom of choice will matter. We, as Arizonans, must hound our legislators now to repeal AZ 36787, or we can expect even more dictatorial, brutal, unconstitutional actions when the next, and we know it's coming, plandemic hits. Thank you.
Scotty McClure.
Boy, that's hard to follow. Scotty McClure, Bullhead. I'm going to ask you to poll on the consent in January. Could somebody please poll number 38 and 40? 40 Ron, that's your area. I don't know that area. Do we really need all those stop signs? So if you don't pull it, I'll go with what you say, okay? You know about it out there. We really need all these things out there. That's a lot of money. Gene, number 38, we really need a 45-mile speed limit on Eager Road because some old geezer out there bitching about people going too fast. It's a paved road, it's not getting dusted. And he's afraid his donkeys or mules will get run over, or his dogs. There is a thing called a fence. You are responsible for your own animals and your own yard. I don't think a 45 mile, and I didn't know Aztec was 45, or Colorado was 45. That's how much money is that wasting? You've got to send a guy out to drill a hole with a bucket truck, big truck, two guys and another truck to put the signs up. So if you add all these together, 38, 39, and 40, geez. Yeah, let's go spend some money. I guess we, if we don't use it, we lose it? That kind of, oh, and here, I guess you guys decided to give the county fair board back to them. Last Saturday, they had an auction there, and we didn't have to pay to get in because people had COVID. There's $3 per 100 vehicles, probably. So who cares about $300? Just drove right in. Apparently, a couple people there have COVID. Okay, we, so why didn't one of the fair board members come there and collect the money if they're doing such a great job? And by the way, they have tried to keep people off the board again. They changed the bylaws twice, that I know of, so some people could not get on the board that wanted to be on the board. Twice they changed the bylaws. And I said before, when are they going to put soap in the bathrooms? All they got in there is that stupid hand sanitizer. I want to wash my hands with soap. That apparently kills COVID. But I guess nobody, can't you have one of the maintenance guys that you're eventually going to, can't you guys work together with these guys? Because they're sure not doing anything still. They need to help you run the fair and do that right, but just, I can't believe you guys did that on Thursday, and we still haven't gotten the Lake Havasu paper in Bullhead's library yet.
Jennifer Esposito.
With the obvious exception of Supervisor Gould, the rest of you really have a lot of nerve to declare Mojave County a constitutional county, and then turn around and take a big steaming dump on the First and 14th Amendments. Let's revisit, shall we? Ignorant and oblivious to parliamentary rules, the little boy from District 1 interrupted the recognized speaker without calling a point of order. A competent chairman would have called the supervisor out of order, but we don't have a competent chairman. Instead, we have an irrational coward who needs a safe space behind a proven worthless piece of Plexiglas. My husband would have been well within the parameters of open meeting law if he had called our supervisor the suspected poodle fornicator, so you should be relieved that he only called her by her first name. Let's take a short trip down memory lane. When the little boy from District 1 was Vice Mayor of Kingman, it's no surprise that he was found guilty of violating open meeting law. Since the League of Cities and Towns provides training on this, for elected officials on this specific subject, we must conclude only that he's either too stupid to understand the training or too arrogant to have paid attention. I suspect that it's both. He's living proof that education does not equate with intelligence, therefore, I will now refer to him only as stupid visor hubris. In the same spirit, I will refer to our cognitively disabled health director as the retard, because it's my point of view that it's an accurate description, and public employees are absolutely not immune from public criticism. It's disappointing that I have to instruct you on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just cut in for future speakers at this meeting and future meetings. Certainly, questioning or perhaps criticizing actions taken or decisions made by the board is appropriate, but name-calling is not appropriate by speakers. Name-calling is not a questioning of policy.
Thank you. Paul Main.
Paul Main, Kingman, Arizona, resident, over 50 years. What's up? I called the Health Department. My good friend, over 40 years, well, four years and over, military vet, he got COVID. They took him to the Prescott Vet Hospital. They had shipping to Phoenix because they couldn't keep his oxygen. I called the Health Department. Hey, this gentleman is sick. Oh, well-informed him. We'll tell him to stay home. He's in the hospital. What is going on? There's no contact tracing. I myself have been exposed over eight times, and yes, it gets old staying home, but not from the Health Department, no, secondhand. So I'd like to know, what happened? How many employees do we have doing contact tracing? Because maybe we should get some money from internet service or other stuff to protect our veterans or people who's dying from this, because it's like the movie Soylent Green. It was on the other day, and maybe it's a wake-up call. Are we turning into a society that our government don't care about us? It's just like, what is going on in Mojave County? Because there is no social contacting from the Health Department. I have over 300 people I called. Believe me, when you get isolated, you are bored. There's nothing to do, so I start calling. You know what? I called the CDC in Atlanta. You know what they told me? Oh, I don't know where they're getting numbers. We don't, all we do is we recognize people who do good work. That is God's truth. I called them, and they said they don't know where we're getting our numbers. So my point is, either we go in full blast and protect our Mojave County residents, or maybe, you know, tell the truth. Maybe this is just, like they say, bull crap. But all I know is I got my shots and all that, so how come the county is not going the extra mile to protect not just me, but the elderly? I mean, my mom lives here in Kingman. I have elderly friends. What's going on? I mean, are we just dropping the ball and leaving it up to the next generation and hope they do better? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jeanie Croft.
Croftell.
Okay, sorry. Prof.
Hi, Jeanie Croftell, Kingman, Arizona, Walla Cranch. I would like to have agenda item 70 polled, and also again on contact tracing. Perhaps Denise can come in and redo the contact tracing pony show that she's done many times, because what I saw on the flow charts is not happening. My significant other is Paul, so if he gets sick, he's going to bring it home to me. And you see me with a mask, and you see me with a respirator here. I don't need COVID. You know, if she doesn't have enough people, where's the MRC? They can go in, they can be trained, they're volunteers. Have them do short shifts, have them come in when you're overloaded on certain days. I understand that there's a continuity of information. When one contact tracer has to hand it over to another, it can still be done. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mark Shaver.
I had this long speech, but evidently it left me. Civility in decorum, yeah, things have gotten out of hand, whether it's sitting here, standing here at the podium, or online. Lot of showboating, and clearly the objective is to make it toxic, turn it up to heat. So I'm not going to rant on this board, but trying to find a way to inspire this board to use its experts, to dial back the tone and the rhetoric and the misinformation that is out there. Yes, this board has a responsibility to the member of their district and in the community to go out there and say, hey, this is the information as we know it to be fact, to be true. If the community has an issue with that fact, it's on them to bring that truth and their experts that is recognizable, recognized by the state, and that the board can say, hey, okay, you brought your experts, we can have a civil debate. But just saying that this is it, and you got to take our word, not going to fly anymore. It's gone down, too far down that road. You just can't say it anymore. You got to come with it. Dr. Ts, cross your i's, all that. It's too late. You got to bring it, and that goes for the board, too. I wish we can bring item 71, because there's a big issue here with that, that we have, that certain word that's in there, because it plays off of this conversation that we are having now. And we need to dial out that toxicity, and we need to dial back those personalities that a lot of you are witnessing today. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Esposito.
Jeff Esposito, address on record. Listen to this conversation and see if you can learn something. You can't come in here. Why not? Well, because you're unvaccinated. But I'm not sick. It doesn't matter. Well, why does Well, why does that guy get to go in? Because he's vaccinated. But he's sick. It's all right, everyone in here is vaccinated. Wait a minute, are you saying everyone in there is vaccinated? Yes. So then why can't I go in there if everyone is vaccinated? Because you'll make them sick. How will I make them sick if I'm not sick and they're vaccinated? Because you're unvaccinated. But they're vaccinated, but they can still get sick. So what the heck does vaccine do? It vaccinates. So vaccinated people can't spread COVID? Oh, no, they can spread COVID just as easily as an unvaccinated person. I don't even know what I'm saying anymore. Look, I'm not sick. Okay. And the guy you let in is sick. That's right. And everybody in there can still get sick even though they're vaccinated. Certainly. So why can't I go in again? Because you're unvaccinated. I'm not asking who's vaccinated or not, I'm just telling you how it is. Never mind, I'll just put on my mask. That's fine. Now I can go in? Absolutely not. But I have a mask. Doesn't matter. I was able to come in here yesterday with a mask. I know. So why can't I come in here today with a mask? Take it easy, buddy. So the mask is no good anymore? No, it's still good. But I can't come in? Correct. Why not? Because you're unvaccinated. But the mask prevents the germs from getting out. Yes, but people can still catch your germs. But they're all vaccinated. Yes, but they can still get sick. But I'm not sick. You can still get them sick. So then masks don't work. Masks work quite well. So how the heck can I get vaccinated people sick if I'm not sick and masks work? Third base reminder, if you have Ebola, meningitis, conjunctivitis, strep throat, measles, mumps, rubella, diphtheria, pertussis, tuberculosis, hepatitis, shingles, MRSA, chicken pox, or a cold, flu, or cough, you may still travel, go to work, go to school, go to a restaurant, go to a gym, go to the bar, go to a mall, go to the grocery store, go to the theater, and go to a concert. Carry on.
Thank you. All right, we'll go on to consent items, five through 54. Supervisor Angus, you have any items on poll?
None this morning.
Supervisor Bishop?
None, thank you.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, number 22 and number 40.
Supervisor Lingefelter?
Nothing this morning. Thank you.
Need a motion to approve consent, five through 24, minus 22 and 40.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number 22, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe this was the, the return of the rural health worker issue from a couple of meetings ago. Denise?
Chairman Johnson, members of the board, Supervisor Gould, this is somewhat of a change to that. We've revised our needs and so what we're looking for is through this immunization funding, we have the ability to hire one EPI, which is much needed, and then a community health specialist, one, that'll help with educating, educating and informing the public about vaccines in general. So this is an area that we generally don't have staffing for. As an example, the people who are funded out of our immunization program actually provide the direct service and so they're busy every single day providing vaccinations out in the community and they don't really have a time to, to actually do any kind of education work other than in the moment with those particular parents. So we're looking at, trying to expand that out so that we can do more general information and education on, on vaccinations.
And ma'am, this is federal funding again?
Correct.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions?
Yes, Chairman Johnson. So, does the federal government tell you what you have to instruct people on when it comes to the vaccines? When you say educated on vaccines, I mean, don't you think most people know already? They, they have made decisions. So do you see the role of public health is to kind of put them down a lane that, that has been agreed on by the CDC, the state public health? Um, I, again, I'm not really sure, when you say education, what that means and if it's really even needed at this point.
Certainly, Supervisor Angus. I, I think, you know, there are a lot of young parents out there who may not be quite as informed about vaccinations and may need some information. And I think just in general, we're just trying to make sure that we provide the most scientifically researched information, right? So you know that comes from Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. It comes from ADHS and there are a couple of other organizations that we would pull information for, for vaccinations.
Um, and therein lies the problem because we're at a point where half the country doesn't trust anything that comes from the CDC or any of that. And to be frank, a lot of it that, it's okay, you know, this isn't that kind of thing. It's just, I'm trying to be real on what we need here in the county and what we spend the money on. So when you give them this information, do you give them all sides of it? I mean, because it isn't, you know, one group has decided something, but there are others equally as good authorities on these kinds of things that say different. So when you're sort of putting people in one lane, um, I think that's a disservice and could come back to basically haunt us.
So I think Supervisor Angus, that we, I mean, we, what we do is we encourage people to talk to their medical providers because they're, they're their trusted source of information. And so when people have questions about vaccines that we're unable to answer or that maybe they're not, um, they're not certain of the information, we certainly encourage them to go and speak with their medical providers.
How many of those kinds of calls do we get? People wanting to know about vaccines? I mean, is it a proactive or are you reactive?
This is more proactive.
So you're going to go out in the community with your, you know, information from the CDC and on behalf of Mojave County encourage people to get vaccinated?
Right, right. And again, this is not just, this is not just a COVID response. This is about all the other vaccinations, childhood vaccinations that we offer within our services and/or that are offered out in the community.
Right. Well, I have some questions on that, but I think we have an agenda item later where that should be all covered. This is about the people. So, you know, I kind of have a little problem with that. How many people do we have doing education?
For vac, for immunizations?
Yeah.
None.
So this would just be for immunization?
Right.
And is there a, a budget that goes with this? Because you go out in the community, I, I've seen you guys over in some community events and, and does that come from, where does that money come from?
So that comes from our, our state and federal dollars that we receive for immunization services?
Okay. Um, all right. Well, again, I think that at this point in our evolution of COVID, I don't really even think it's necessary, but if it's with the other things, which again, we'll talk about later, then the epidemiologist, what exactly does, do they do on a daily basis?
On a daily basis, they're actually providing us with a lot of the data that we provide either to you, to the public, to the media, um, the reports that we generate, the Board of Supervisors update these meetings.
So the epidemiologist is doing the administrative reports?
They're doing, they're pulling all the information for those reports. That's their job, is they, they pull all of that data and then put it into the report form, whether or not that's graphs or charts or some narrative that defines what that looks like.
Well, isn't the epidemiologist, it's kind of a higher paying position, so we're basically having them in, in doing an administrative function?
That's not actually an administrative function though Supervisor Angus. That's, that's what they do is they draw, they pull the data down from the sources, Medsys and, and CDC and ADHS, and then they compile that into the reports and that information is then provided out to the public or to you.
Okay. And again, we'll be talking about how the information comes to us later, but, um, again, so, but just to follow up on what Supervisor Gould said, so this was originally from the five people that we were going to hire with this grant and now we've whittled it down to two?
Correct. That's correct.
And it's a grant money, it's nothing from the county?
That's correct. Yes. All grant funded.
Okay. And just so we'll plant it in your mind for later, is there any room in your department to basically put together all information from all different, you know, reliable sources? And it's more than just the CD, I think at this point, the CDC is the least reliable. This is my opinion, source, because it changes all the time. And I know you guys, I mean, it has to be the hardest job in the world because you're getting this information, you're putting it out there, and then when it invariably gets changed, people come to you and it's, it's very difficult. I understand both sides, but at this point, maybe we're at a point where we need to, you know, have a sort of co-mingling of different information so people can make the best decision for themselves.
Right. I agree.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. The epidemiologist, do they not help with the mosquito counts and the reporting of, of West Nile disease and such as that as well?
Supervisor Bishop, actually our environmental health team, we have a couple of members on our team that actually do all the vector control work on mosquitoes.
Okay. And then as far as the vaccine, I have to admit that I'm, I'm very naive when it comes to, to vaccines because I've led a very healthy life. I, I know my children all were immunized for school and we all know about the COVID. But within the last, I'd say, five years, I learned that, about hepatitis C and hepatitis B and I'm not still sure what the difference is, but I know there's vaccines for those, uh, pneumonia vaccines. I didn't know you could get a shot for pneumonia. And then, um, what was about three years ago, I got a very mild case of shingles. I didn't even know what shingles was and I find out I could have been vaccinated against that, but I had no idea. So I think maybe education for, for people like me that just don't know anything about the healthcare system is beneficial. I mean, I hope more people are like me and, and, uh, healthy during their lifetimes, but.
It's definitely for all vaccines. I mean, that's, that's an important point. I mean, I know the focus has been on COVID for many, many months, but this is for all vaccines, so not just limited to the COVID.
And that's part of what the, uh, the health ban that we just got approval for with ARPA funds will be providing is information such as this.
Correct.
Supervisor Lingefelter?
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Yeah, I think that there's definitely some value just to make our citizens aware of all the different vaccinations that are available to them on an optional basis. Regarding the COVID vaccination, however, you know, I've heard nationally, and correct me if I'm wrong, that 78% of the people that are going into the ICU for COVID are obese and very unhealthy. Is that true? So are we just educating on the vaccine itself or are you allowed to educate as well on things that, early treatment, uh, healthy behaviors, things that will help people not end up in ICU, right? Because that's really, if I remember correctly, a year ago, what the whole flatten the curve thing was about was we didn't want our healthcare system to crash, we didn't want our hospitals to be overrun.
Correct.
We didn't want to overrun their capacity, right? But, I mean, it's, it's foolish to think that we can keep everybody in the society from getting sick. It's just, we can't do that.
Right.
But I haven't heard really anything about healthy behaviors that are published. Are we able to, to educate on those things as well?
Supervisor Lingefelter, absolutely. I mean, I think prevention is the key, which starts early in life and continues all throughout life, you know, whether or not it's physical activity or nutrition, stress, smoking, you name it. And we have a number of programs within the Health Department that provide that kind of education out in the community and in specific target groups. So those are really important factors, obviously, to, to ensure that people stay healthy all along and, and that makes them, you know, that makes the disease prevention piece a little bit easier on their bodies.
Absolutely. I think those things are more important by far than, than any vaccine could ever be. You know, it's not a one-stop shop. If you stay healthy, if you exercise, if you take care of yourself, um, you might get COVID, but you may not even be down for a week.
Correct.
You have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Gould?
I move that item 22 be denied.
Motion to have a second. Motion dies for lack of second. Do we have a motion?
Chairman Johnson, I'll make the motion that we approve item number 22 as proposed.
Motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion on second, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion carries, item number 40. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering if the Public Works Department can give me an overview on what we're doing with stop signs and speed limits in Yucca.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson, members of the board. This item came through our Traffic Safety Committee. It was a request by the community, some concern about speeding in and around the Yucca Community School. And as most know, the frontage roads between Proving Grounds Road and Alamo Road interchanges in the Yucca area are ADOT maintained. And in our study of the signing that currently exists or does not exist actually, in the area on the west side of the highway of Frontage Road, we did find that the speed, we did not have speed limit signs posted for 25 miles per hour, which is a residential speed limit, district throughout that greater westerly area of local roadways from Sixth Street on down to Second Street. So we just confirmed through our study that we did not have 25 mile per hour speed limits informing motoring traffic coming off of the ADOT Frontage Road. And this is all that we're asking the board to approve, that we allow, that we can post 25 mile per hour speed limits, duly informed motorists to the posted speed coming off of Frontage Road.
So without a speed limit, those roads were under safe and prudent?
Correct. State law would actually govern with it being a residential area that state law prescribes a 25 mile per hour speed limit. Here, we'd like to just augment that by posting the speed limit.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Lakowski, is there any legal liability to the county for not posting these signs if per se there is, there's a serious accident at one of these intersections?
Um, Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Bishop, good question. There is not inherent liability as it still defaults to a safe and prudent, but here in this case, consistency does, you know, go a long way toward duly informing the motorists. This area, this community is probably seeing mainly traffic attributed to local residents, et cetera, but nonetheless, it's a good practice to stay consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 4 to be adopted.
Second.
A motion on second, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Now, go to item number 67. We have the Representative Cobb here who wishes to address this. Supervisor Angus?
Thank you very much and thank you for moving it up front. Our representative is very, very busy. So this is an item we're being asked today to approve money that's been allotted to Mojave County through the state. I'm going to give a very brief introduction just about what this is about and then Don Bischoff and Representative Cobb have a lot to add to the discussion about the nuts and bolts of it and the funding of it. So about five years ago, I was at a CSA meeting and the Speaker of our mid-sized county caucus was then Deputy Sheriff David Rhodes from Yavapai County. He is now the sheriff. He talked to us about a program that Yavapai was implementing through a federal grant. It was called Reach Out. It was meant to address overcrowding in jails by treating people such as the mentally ill and addicted at first contact before they completely enter the jail system and get them the help they need immediately. And it was very intriguing to me. Several years later, I heard that Yavapai County had seen a substantial decrease in recidivism due to this program. In fact, it was so successful that the state wanted to appropriate money for other counties if they followed the Yavapai model of Reach Out. Mojave County had been implementing some parts of the program and has worked with Yavapai over the years, so we were the natural next in line. At that time, we decided to pay a visit to Yavapai County and see how it works. So in January of 2020, Sheriff Schuster, Don Bischoff, Chairman Bishop at the time, Mike Hendricks and I traveled to Yavapai County and received a tour and a presentation. It was very interesting and we were excited that, that we were being the next county considered to try this, this program, which is basically criminal justice reform. The program had been so successful that the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors allocated $5 million for the Reach Out facility in their new Law and Justice Center they are building in Prescott. It was explained to us that a separate facility is imperative for the program to work completely and I believe Don will explain that. Our sheriff's office has been involved every step of the way, another essential part of the program. The county manager and I met personally and in groups to make sure that all departments would be on board with this as it involves... as it involves many different parts of the legal system. Then COVID hit and everything stopped. Like everyone, we weren't really sure about what was happening and what was going to happen financially for the state. As we know now, the state is in very good financial position. And this past session, they passed HB 2189 and allotted $11 million this year towards this jail reentry program. $5 million of this is coming to Mojave County for the program and the Reach Out facility. That is what we'll be voting on here today. Representative Cobb has assured us that we will be receiving another allocation towards the startup and ongoing costs of the program and there will be grant money available going forward. The hope is that this will take pressure off the jail, save taxpayers' money and get help for the people in our community who keep finding themselves in the legal system and then transfer them to outside social service agencies who then pick up the costs. As of today, recidivism has decreased 30% in Yavapai County and we hope to see similar or even better results here. We believe that in the near future, this will be a mandated program from the state. With Yavapai County, we will be the pioneers that lead the way in this part of criminal justice reform. Take it away.
Thank you Chairman and Supervisors. For the record, Representative Cobb, District 5, you covered it so well Supervisor Angus. I mean, we, this is a program that Yavapai County has had in place as a pilot program. And just what Supervisor Angus says, that they, their recidivism rate is down, is at 30%. They've decreased costs within the, within their system. They've been working very well. Sheriff Rhodes is an amazing sheriff and he's led the way on this. He brought forward a year ago and, and you know, Supervisor Angus and I have been working on this for two years now, actually, because just what she said during COVID, we had to stop everything. But two years ago, they brought the program to us and every sheriff within the state of Arizona came in there with him and backed them up as far as what they've been doing. If someone's mentally ill, why are we throwing them in jail? If someone's got issues with just normal living and they don't have a place to live, they don't have friends, they don't have food, they don't have a job, why are we not helping them with those items? Somebody's mentally ill and has been mentally ill and keeps continuing to trespass. And that's usually what we're talking about is somebody, something like trespassing. Or if they're an opioid addicted, why aren't they going through a treatment center? So what this data center does, and they've created a data center at Yavapai from ground up. And it essentially ties in everybody, the judges, the sheriff's department, mental health. It ties all those people in together and allows us to, to almost triage and send them into different areas before they end up in the jail system. And then hopefully we can continue to reduce how many people we are going into the jail system. And that's what we're trying to do here. We have 11 million going this year. Five comes to Mojave County, four will go to Pinal County. And then there's one more to Yavapai. They've been able to raise private dollars along with the pilot program that they started. So we're helping them continue with that. And then another million is going to be going for that data center. And we think we've actually got some extra funds that we're going to be able to do to help the data center be able to expand into the different counties. And we also have funds that are ongoing funds that I think we could be able to do that without going through session, out of session. So we'll probably look at that through JLBC over the next two meetings that we have in September and December. And I'm available for any questions. I'm going to take off and let, let Mr. Bischoff finish up here. I just want to say this is a great program. I'm so glad we were able to do that. We got $8 million set aside for next year for the next few counties that want to, that are in, in the line to be able to do this. I hope that they all are as successful as the one in Yavapai.
Thank you Representative Cobb. Thank you and thank you for all you did with this. It has been sort of a long journey, but I, I hope that we can do as well, if not better than Yavapai County. Thank you.
Representative Cobb, I also want to thank you and let you know that we appreciate helping Mojave County step up and follow Yavapai County's lead. Good job.
So at this point in time, I could probably answer questions or I could stand up here and talk for another four or five minutes. But does anybody have any questions?
Thank you Chairman Johnson. You know, I had the opportunity to sit in only one meeting on this issue and, and you know, it's really intriguing. I was excited to learn about it. One thing I'm curious about, will the jail be able to track cost savings of jail per diem costs? You know, it could cost X amount to house a prisoner, right? And if we're, if this is successful and it lowers the population, hopefully.
So I think the biggest gauge of the success of this program is where they talk about the recidivism rate. And, and what Yavapai has been able to do is reduce their jail population. So in the bigger scheme of things, I would tell you before COVID, our, our Mojave County detention facility was running anywhere between 80 to 85% capacity. The best practice is when you hit 80 to 85% capacity of an existing facility, it's time to expand or build another one. So during the COVID, we've been able to manage our population a little bit better. We've had to pick up the process of running quarantine processes. So that's taken up some bed space. So the true cost savings is when you look at not having to expand because the inmate population increases and increases. And Supervisor Lingefelter, as you know, the current facility we have was built with the idea that it could have future expansions. There is one area, we call it the Sheldon area, still has a dirt floor, but it's down on the lower level and essentially has space for two more housing units. So probably three years ago, perhaps, we did a, an internal study of that space and we came up with two concepts, working with an engineering firm, architectural firm out of Phoenix. And they guesstimated very roughly that to expand that space, and again, this was about three or four years ago, was about $6 million. So we know that it's, it's not any less than $6 million. In fact, it's gone up. So, and of course, with the, the building costs comes more operational costs, comes more staffing costs. So the true gauge of the success of any of these programs is the fact that you're, you're able to control the inmate population and you don't have to build more jails or add more beds.
Yeah, I think you're talking about exactly my point. My point is you have a budget now and when you introduce this sort of alternative programming, there's going to be a delta there, cost savings between, between the jail per diem costs for, for housing people and the people that you're saving through these programs. And perhaps the, the delta that you're saving on, on housing people in the jail. There's a, there's a case there to, if it's successful, as we hope that it will be, that, that those funds could then be used for these programs.
Quite possibly, yes. And the, the target that we're looking at here are those with substance use disorders and mental health issues. And those are big costs for us. They take a lot of our resources internally and quite often that demographic of inmate often ends up receiving healthcare services in the community and those are expensive. So that would tell you that right now we have one person in the hospital who is, fits the criteria of one of these, of substance use disorder. But the charges in that criminal case don't allow us to do anything other than to continue to main custody, maintain custody. So the, the other side of this, again, the key is to control population. What Yavapai has done is they've used the intercept model. And there are six intercept points and zero and one involve those that are not in custody. So we take the opportunity with the community providers and perhaps the first law enforcement contact pre-arrest to divert them to services in the community rather than to bring them to jail. And as Representative Cobb indicated, a lot of times these people represent very low level offenses, disorderly conduct, trespassing. So if, if at the early stages, they can be diverted away from jail, then those are the first two intercepts. Intercept two through four actually involve the jail so that if they do end up in jail, we work a program to get them out and tied in with the services that we've established with the partnerships with the, the community providers.
Well, it sounds like Yavapai County has a set of performance metrics. And, and so I look forward to, you know, maybe in a year or two, whenever.
They, they do, they, and Sheriff Rhodes has had to, and his staff have had to remind me many times when I express my impatience, their project has been at play probably for six or eight years. So it's a long project. They've blazed the trail, they've, they've, so we'll be benefiting from their successes and their failures and everything else. So it's not going to be a seven or eight year process for us. It'll be much accelerated. In fact, we currently have two inmate release coordinators now that we modeled after their program and have tweaked it to, to, to fit as best we can here in Mojave County. So we've got a huge head start and I think that's why Mojave was, was recognized for the, the funding that it was is because in comparison to the other counties, excluding perhaps Maricopa and Pima, we're light years ahead of where everybody else is because we have been working with Yavapai.
Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Chairman Johnson?
Supervisor Goode.
Sir, do you know if the bill contains any performance metrics that are reported, supposed to be reported to the state?
Not that I'm aware of. It does, it does include the data collection requirement, which is, is something that Yavapai worked on with their stakeholders. They also worked with NAU and they have built the data collection system. And so there's funding tied to that. And I think that's, that is one of the requirements under this legislation is that we participate with that reporting, which obviously would because that is one of the gauges of not only diverting and capturing these and diverting them away from incarceration, but also judging the success and the recidivism that you're having.
So that'll give us a number of people that are diverted from jail?
I think, yes, it would.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Bishop?
Hi, Don. First off, I, I want to just thank you for bringing this program to our attention. It was you that encouraged Supervisor Angus and I to accompany you and the sheriff to Yavapai County and take a tour of, of their facility because at that time, we knew nothing about it. I understand that at that time, you'd been working with Yavapai County and were impressed with what they were doing and wanted to share that with, with our county. So I just wanted to say hats off to the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office for setting the new standard and inspiring others across the state to follow their lead. And I'm honored to be one of the first to take advantage of all of the work that they did so that we don't have to repeat learning this program, we can follow their lead. So I, I just really wanted to let you know that you're the guy that got it started. We're all, the elected officials are all going to take credit for this amazing program, but we know it was you, so thank you.
Well, it takes a village.
I have some questions. Doesn't the court have the responsibility now that if somebody comes in that's mentally impaired and we give them a public defender because we're paying, the taxpayers are paying for everything here? So they get a public defender, they get a judge that's paid for by them, county attorney is paid for by the people. And that judge has the ability to say, you know, this person seems to be, have mental problems. So we should send them to something to get taken care of. Same thing if they want to do something with, this person has a drug problem, which, you know, I believe we all know that unless you're willing to take care of your problem, it, it ain't going away no matter how many times you go to, go to rehab. They have those abilities. I mean, some places even have drug courts now. Isn't this doing something that, because our courts haven't been doing what they're supposed to do?
I think what this program does is it pulls everything together. There are, at the Superior Court level, when they are presented with defendants that have mental illness, there are a number of options that they have. One is a return to competency program, which the jail actually works with the prosecutor, defense attorney and the judge that is presiding over that case and our contracted competency program agency. So that's one option if it rises to that level. There are, but in the lower level cases, there are drug courts. We have wellbeing courts. We're working and actually just starting at the Superior Court level with Judge Williams, the Health and Wellness Court, which, which covers those. And most of those are once they've already entered into the system. A lot of this program tries to pick up before they enter into the system or at the early onset and when they're at a lower level offense. So to answer your question, yes, there are some programs, there are some responsibilities with the courts, both Superior Court and limited jurisdiction courts. And the jail does work with them. In fact, with our, with the two inmate release coordinators we have. And we work with them in the specialty courts with Health and Wellness. So I think what this program does is it pulls it together and this, I think, will be something that, that perhaps can serve as the glue that pulls it together and maybe fills some of the gaps, especially at the lower level. If that answers.
All the time I worked in the jail, I never met anybody that didn't abuse drugs or abuse alcohol. I mean, they're not, they're in jail for a reason and obviously that's the cheapest way to go to get your entertainment. I don't know if drugs are still cheap to get, but it just seems like we're bending over backwards to help the people that are robbing, the people that are paying the taxes to help these people to bend over backwards for. When I looked into the, the program that's being proposed that we did copy of, it looks like they're still costing them between half a million and a million dollars a year out of their general fund. Have you seen anything like that?
I'm not intimately familiar with how their budgeting is. I know that they also, that Yavapai also operates with the jail district. So that gives them some different funding sources. And I know, as mentioned, is they also have worked with REBA and a lot of their community behavioral health organizations to pick up other funding. So I'm not really sure.
So you're having, from what I read, if we read it correctly, you pick me up off the street and, and I'm just a trespasser. So you're gonna, you do an intake and we have officers that do an intake and then you say, well, you're gonna send me someplace?
Under the program, if, if you've already come to jail, then that's where you're going to be. But during the, the intake process, you would have a screening if you agreed to participate in it, a low level offense. That screening would result in a lot of information being condensed down and shared with the court before your first court appearance. So if you were identified as somebody that has a little bit of an alcohol issue, perhaps has a mental illness that you haven't been dealing with or had been, but had just fallen out of services, that information is shared with the court and the court takes that into consideration on a number of things, but to include your release. And they can include the conditions of your release that you submit to one of the behavioral health organizations for an assessment. They can hold you in custody until somebody can come in and do an assessment to determine exactly which type of program it is that would best fit your needs with the idea that if you have an alcohol problem, substance use problem or mental illness, it would get you keyed into the program that will help you with that so that you don't reoffend.
But those programs are there right now today, right? I'm making any new programs?
Correct. What's lacking is, is the link. So using you as an example, if you came in, you're aware that you have this issue or you have a, a problem with substance use, but you're not actively doing anything with it or you're aware that those programs are out there, but you're not engaging in them. Or you'd like to engage in them, but there are some barriers, transportation or other things that are preventing you from doing that. That's where this program comes in. They can help make that connection and help maybe bring some of those barriers down.
Who's paying for this? They, now you've decided that I'm a good alcoholic and you're going to send me to the, wherever you're sending me to, who pays for this? Me or?
One of the, it could be. One of the parts of the assessment is to determine what healthcare coverage you have and what you don't have. So if you have private insurance, most private insurance will help with many of those programs. So it may be just a matter of letting you know that your health So it may be just a matter of letting you know that your healthcare plan does cover those and providing that information for you and whoever the community provider is to make that connection. If it's the access program and you're just not enrolled in access, although a lot of people are perhaps eligible, they don't, they're not active in, in staying enrolled, they'll fall off the enrollment rules. We can assist with identifying that and getting them enrolled or back re-enrolled. And again, making that connection to the community provider with a payment source. At some point in time, there could be grant funds that, that are available that the community providers are aware of and access to cover for those services. We see that quite frequently as well.
So it's got, basically, I'm guessing not that many people that come to, come to jail have medical insurance. You know, if they are, they can be able to get a.
Well, I, I would tell you that, that usually the, the type of clientele that we're receiving in our facility are not the kind that are responsible enough to have health insurance. And if they are, they don't stay very long. They're usually out by their next.
Right.
Court appearance.
Yeah, I guess, I, I understand what the, what, looking at it, to me, we're just getting to be a country of just a nanny state where we take care of everything. So the average guy who can afford to go to rehab or takes, takes responsibility for the crime he did and doesn't want to whine about, oh, it was drugs or alcohol, we do favors for him. But I'm not going to beat a dead horse. I know how this is going. Is there a motion or further discussion?
Something?
Supervisor Angus.
Part, part of this also, very pivotal to the success of the program is this database. I don't think we kind of went in, it's a statewide database because this is, tends to be a, a transient population. So if somebody gets arrested here and they go through this screening and all that information, and let's say they do some stuff, and let's say they take off and they go over to Coconino County, and they're picked up there, right away, they don't have to start from the beginning. They know what their, you know, what, what their problems were, what they were, what they were asked to do, what their, so it, it, that's all part of it. I'm not crazy about big databases, but this one, I think, will end up helping the whole state. That's why I think all, all counties are going to be a part of it very, very quickly. Right now, if somebody, let's say, has the DTs, they come to the, the prison and they, they have some problem, who pays for that? Who pays for their medical?
As, as long as they are, as long as their care is received inside the jail facility, then it's part of the.
Right.
The healthcare that we provide.
So if that, if that person gets taken out of the jail and is then absorbed by a social services agency, then they become the client of that agency, and they bill, and they bill access or whatever the thing. So it takes that burden because, you know, I, I think we all agree that the jail, the jailers are not trained to be mental health experts or addiction crisis counselors. So you get the people to the help they need. Is it going to help everyone? Absolutely not. Will it help most? Who knows? But it will help, it will help many. And the idea is to get them out of the jail and get them the help they need. What is the average stay you think of, of people for, who are picked up for petty offenses?
It, it's been a while since I've run the, the report that, that shows our average length of stay. Keeping in mind that some of our inmates, and it's, it's an average, that some of our inmates are in our custody for two or three years. Leading up to the COVID, we had one inmate who was two months shy of five years being in our custody. So keep that in mind. There's a lot that have to work through. COVID has slowed things down with the courts and everything else. And then there are those that are arrested, booked, and, and released, sometimes within hours, usually less than 24 hours. And so our average length of stay is about three weeks. But what I will tell you is if you take someone who commits a low-level offense and you involve mental health into the equation, their stay is generally longer. And if it's not, the first time or two they're released, but they're quickly right, but they reoffend and they're right back in custody, then they can be, I, I know of one person named Jeremy. A city of Kingman spent six months, and he had mental health issues. But once we peeled the onion and found a solution and, and, and connected him with those services because of what we had started, and this was early on in, in our involvement with the, the pre-runner of the, the reentry program. That was many years ago, but he, he lived with us six months.
We've been told repeatedly by the first people who run the Yavapai program that you're only as good as your coalition, and that is the coalition of your outside mental health providers, social service agencies, the courts, everybody, and that it is truly a community effort. So right now, as I see it, we have, there's a lot of different things going on, and there's so many different programs, and no one's really kind of talking to each other. This kind of puts everything together and going for the goal of helping the person and by extension, taking the pressure off of the jail. So with that, if there's no other questions, I'll make the motion.
If, let me have one more question. I asked the county manager, did anticipation of this, did you look at any additional costs might be coming for our next budget? Not the next one if we don't have it built, but I mean, additional costs in the future. Things that are free always end up costing us money.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Board members, no, we have not to date.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Supervisor Lingefelder.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Just one more question, if I could. Do you have to go to jail first to be eligible for these programs? Or are our judges, as a form of alternative disposition, permitted to sentence folks to participate in these programs first and keep them out of jail? If the goal is to minimize your inmate population?
So to answer your question, no, you don't necessarily have to come to jail. The intercept model calls for intervention at the community level. So with the community providers or, and/or the family, friends, taking the opportunity to engage them, this, this potential inmate in with the system or at the first contact with law enforcement. Law enforcement obviously gets called usually mainly because they're the, the people that answer their phone and will send somebody 24 hours a day. So a lot of times, law enforcement will end up involved with a situation involving mental health, substance use issues that perhaps could be diverted away from arrest. So, and they can engage that person with a lot of these programs. So it's not just the jail. This, this is where it's starting, and it, and it will push in both directions, both to the, to the officers working the street, our community stakeholders, as well as higher up into the courts.
And I'm just learning about this, but correct me if I'm wrong. It sounds to me, right now, in Mojave County, if an officer or a deputy encounters somebody, a lot of times it sounds to me like they're just ending up in our jail because they don't have anywhere to, else to stick them.
A, a lot of times, that's the easiest way to put an end to a situation. It's not always the best way, but with education in a program and, and the cooperation with the community providers and everything else, it gives them more tools to use.
It's the easiest solution. That also drives up our jail costs.
Yeah, and I would tell you that, you know, point in time, pre-COVID, about 40% of the, the jail population that we had self-reported mental health and/or substance use issues. So a lot of those people probably needed to be exactly where they were at. Some of them, maybe not, but some of those, had there been some intercept prior to, maybe they would have gone a different direction and not gotten to that level where they are there. We, we, this morning, we have six inmates that are on suicide watch. Every single day, there's six, eight, or 10 inmates that are on a suicide watch. So they're experiencing mental illness at some level. Every day, there's probably just as many that are detoxing from alcohol or opiate abuse. So that's, that's what's going on. I will tell you that the overwhelming majority of the suicides that we've had in our facility over the last 10 years have been directly correlated with alcohol and opiate use through the detox process. So it's a big issue. The, the issues are probably not one that we're going to arrest our way out of, but if that's the option, we continue to go, then we're going to experience the same results. And at some point in time, we're going to have to expand the jail. We can try this and maybe not get to the point where we have to expand the jail or prolong it much longer.
Supervisor Angus.
Okay, before I make the motion, I also address the funding issue. We were told when we first went to Yavapai County that this is all funded by grants. There's so, and we all know that. We all, community services, there's so many grants out there for addiction, for mental illness. It's been, in the Trump administration, it was one of his biggest, people don't even know this, one of his biggest pushes. And the grants are out there. It's why it's very important to have people who's involved in that world in it. Regina Cobb, when she kind of went over it, but she, there will be an allocation, another up to $5 million to start it. And it will be up to us to, whoever the new governor is, to lobby for ongoing funding. And I, I do believe that is what's going to happen because I believe it is going to be that successful. So with that.
If I could just add, before you go on, and if David Rhodes was here, he would tell you, under Sheriff Masher, when he started, when, when he had David Rhodes start working on this as a jail commander many years ago, he looked at what the Department of Corrections was doing with their reentry program. And just very simply, the thought process was, we're investing money on the back end for these people to re-enter as they come out of prison. Why are we not investing funds on the front end to keep people from getting to the point where they're going to prison and perhaps getting them out of jail or preventing that they even come to jail? So it's my understanding, and that is a very short Reader's Digest version of, of some of the thought process on how this all got started. But that was the key, is to divert some of those funds off of the back end and put them on the front end. And, and that's what's happened.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. And also, the Supreme Court is very supportive of the programs and has promised monies for that, to be allotted for that too. So the motion is to accept the Arizona Department of Administration funding in the amount of $5 million for the creation of a coordinated ranchery planning services program in and part of the Mojave County Detention Facility.
Motion, second. Second. Any further discussion? Are you none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
All right, we'll go on to the public hearings. Item number 55, I'll open the public hearing. Amendment to the Mojave County General Plan. I have no one signed up. Does anyone wish to address the board? Any none, I will close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Lingefelder.
If I may have Mr. Walsh come up to the podium for a moment. Hi, Tim. How are you this morning? And I'm looking through the backup documentation, and I'm not quite sure. Have they, have they given any light to proposed use? Are they doing, they mentioned food, retail sales, food establishments. What, what is the property owner's intent for this? I know zoning comes first and site planning comes second, but have they given an indication of what they want to do here?
Good morning. Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Lingefelder. Just looking real quick to see, I believe, the only description they gave us at the time was for commercial. Let's see, commercial and multifamily C2H. General commercial and multifamilies is what they're looking to, for the purpose for that property.
And that's on item 55, multifamily?
That would be items 55 and then, so 55 is a general plan amendment, and then 56 is the follow-up rezone following that general plan amendment for the same property.
Right. This one's difficult for me. I've, I've received a lot of complaints or letters of opposition from folks in the scenic area. They like the rural nature. They like being, you know, remote. And they like the quiet. They're concerned with the congestion that this may, may cause, but at the same time, we have private property rights in this country. And it looks like from reviewing all of the materials that our planning and zoning commission heard the issue, they recommended approval by unanimous vote. They'll have to bring a site plan.
That, that's correct.
Prior to, prior to anything else being approved, correct?
That's correct. So what this does is this allows for the, the commercial and multifamily use there. But yeah, prior to moving forward with anything, they would submit a site plan for, for review.
And a, a part of that site planning process, is there a traffic impact analysis that's done? You know, really, really to mitigate any sort of noise or, or traffic circulation issues to make sure that we can try to balance as best as we can?
That's correct. As part of our site plan review, we, we do include Public Works and any other interested agencies related to that specific property and that use. So that would be included, a site, traffic impact. And basically, Public Works would, would look at the proposed use and proposed site plan and determine how that affected there right away and, and make whatever comments or recommendations in order to allow that, that specific site plan to be approved.
And I also see it's, it's kind of in like a basin and range issue, area where there's a, a lot of hills. They'll have to do some, perhaps some flood control mitigation.
Yes, and, and part of our recommendation for, for approval came on, on the fact that it is located along Scenic Boulevard, or Scenic, yeah, Scenic Boulevard. So a lot of the, the commercial uses in that area are, are found along Scenic Boulevard. And that, that was part of our, our recommendation, or our, and now, part of our analysis in recommending approval was that finding.
Great. Thank you, Tim. I appreciate it.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to.
Supervisor Lingefelder.
Recommend the, approve the adoption of BOS Resolution Number 2021-143.
Second.
Motion, second. Further discussion? Are you none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing. Item number 56. Rezone Number 2021-144. Assessors' Parcel 40277-009 Mary. I have no one signed up. Anyone wish to address the board? Are you none? I'll close the public hearing. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lingefelder.
To make a motion to approve the adoption of BOS Resolution Number 2021-144.
Second.
Motion, second. Further discussion? Are you none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 57 is a public hearing. I'll open that on a special use permit. Assessors' Parcel 40232184. I have Ronald.
My name's Ronald Freitas. I'm just the owner of the property, so I just came in today to answer any questions that you guys might have on me. Just trying to get my special use permit for a small RV park.
Okay, we'll see if there's any, is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on this? Are you none? We will close the public hearing. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant or a motion? Supervisor Lingefelder.
Chairman Johnson, thank you. Sir, if I may ask you to, sorry, come back up to the podium for a moment. I understand you're, you're trying to do a small RV park here on, on the site. Is that correct?
Oh, yes, on the strip of Arizona.
On the strip, right. I've received a number of, of letters of opposition. I'm sure that you've probably heard from many of the same individuals I have, and some of their concerns are, I'll share them with you, and I just would like to know what you think and how you, you want to try to get past those things. So the transient nature of an RV park, some of the folks are concerned with the increased traffic on the roads, which would sort of accelerate the, you know, the condition of the roads, you know, the negative condition of the roads requiring additional maintenance. And they don't want to be shouldered 100% with, with, you know, they're, they're paying property taxes. A lot of the people that pay, that go into an RV park, they don't pay county property taxes here. They don't own any property. They want to make sure that they're not going to, you know, their tax dollars, which are combined with everybody else's tax dollars in Mojave County, that they, the residents are not 100% shouldered with the burden of, you know, the roads and, and, you know, they're concerned with also the trails, some of the trail systems in the area.
Well, there's no trail systems in that area. I kind of, on Willow Road, it's a dead-end road. So there's about, I don't know, seven, six neighbors that live behind me on that. One of the neighbors that does live back there actually owns Willow Road because it's not a county road yet. So she's been trying to hand it over to the county, so that way, that's not a problem for it. I would say about half of my neighbors. I would say about half of my neighbors now, since I've lived there, because I've been there since 2007.
Okay.
And a lot of them are new, even a couple of them are new since I've started doing this thing. So, the ones that are, and even a couple of them have sold since now, and I live basically across the street from the Pilot gas station that they just approved a bit there, so, I mean, the amount of traffic that's coming in went up because of that. I, I really disagree that my little tiny 15 space is going to increase traffic. And for the most part, I'm not even really advertising, I'm not doing a full-on business with it, it's my family and friends. So my dad lives in one spot, my friend lives in another spot, my brother lives in a spot, I have an RV that I'm planning on moving in for a spot, I'm not really going to be running an in-and-out business where people are going to be staying there overnight, it's going to be like an actual resident. One of the guys that lives there works at the Pilot down the road, so he walks to work. The neighbor that just moved in across the street is running a commercial business, and I think that's more up and down the road with FedEx and UPS than I'm ever gonna do.
I appreciate your input, thank you, appreciate that. Tim, may I ask you to come back, just really quick? And my question on this item is, is really, you know, the same, they'll have to again do a site planning process with you and your staff, is traffic impact analysis a part of this and everything else that's typical of our...
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Lingefelter, that is correct. This is the first step, this is a special use permit, following this, a, an RV site plan would be, need to be submitted. One of the conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission did add to this is that condition number two, public access to the site must be obtained to the satisfaction of the county engineer. This one's interesting, the parcel has access, but the, the, the access is a, it's a parcel rather than, it has not been dedicated or accepted by the county as right of way. The owner of that parcel has issued a letter of support stating that they would be willing to dedicate that parcel to the county and that the county accepted. So, that, that letter is in the, the backup for this item. But yes, it would be reviewed by Public Works and Development Services and all interested parties to determine the impact of the, the improvement on the area and the need and mitigation for that.
One follow-up on that, would that piece of property that provides access to this, would that need to be dedicated to the county before we approve anything, or are we doing things in the proper order?
It could be done as part of the site plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Make a motion to approve the adoption of BOS Resolution Number 2021-145.
Second.
Motion, second, further discussion. Are you none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll take a five-minute break. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Lingefelter.
To make a motion to approve the adoption of BOS Resolution Number 2021-145. Lastly, I'm holding an easement deed, and I'm going to read it to you, that says, part of this road, this accessway to the, to the applicant's parcel is being made and assigned for perpetual private easement for ingress and egress across certain real property, and it goes on to describe the real property that forms part of this road. So we're again up in the, the forgotten corner of the state, the Arizona Strip State of I-15. This, we're essentially dealing with a long driveway that comes off of a front of, of Old Highway 91. It's a long driveway to three parcels, my client's home, their next-door neighbor, Don Caliendo, who submitted a, a letter in opposition, and the applicant's parcel, the applicant's, an out-of-state property owner. He has a private access easement, it's not public, the commercial, you know, any other smokescreen words thrown by an attorney don't matter. There's a lot of private roads for, on commercial operations that if you drive on, you're going to get, you know what, handed to you. This is a private access easement, that's all he has. My second point, which is shorter than my first, Mr. Chairman, if I could have maybe one or two more minutes, I'm about out of time, I'll be really quick on the second point.
All right, it is a public hearing, so we go by the time limit, if we have questions, we'll call you back.
Okay. Any questions?
Nah, they'll call you, as soon as they close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Sir. Alex Jensen?
Good morning, Chairman Johnson, members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Alex Jensen, my home address is 1495 West 1025 South in Leighton, Utah. I'm here today representing my brother, Courtney, and, and his wife. I'm not a liar, I do have some experience in public management, that's why my brother's asked me to be involved. For the last 30 years, I've served and currently serve as the city manager for the city of Leighton, Utah, a city of 80,000 and just north of Salt Lake. That doesn't mean, make me an expert by any stretch, I'm not suggesting that, but I have learned through experience, I know about these issues, I know about general plans, I know about zoning ordinances, I know about the responsibilities and roles of staff and of planning commissions and of elected bodies, and I want to thank you for your service before anything. Having set up there for years and years, I know that it's not easy, and you've handled yourself with the quorum, and, and so thank you for your service. Just want to emphasize quickly what, what Mr. Harrison said, this is a private, these are facts, there have been a lot of things that have been thrown against the wall that are not facts. We've spent a great deal of time doing title researches, talking to professional engineers, professional surveyors, to make sure that what we're saying is factually accurate, and I confirm to you standing before you today that they are. This is a private road, it's a private easement. According to the county's own records, and talking to your GIS mapping people and Public Works Department, there is no right of way that has ever existed here. And so we're very concerned about the possibility of inserting 170-unit RV park, when Mr. Lingefelter talked about impact to the communities. I think if you had two, two residential structures, that right through the front yards, you're bringing a road that'll generate up to 70 trips per day in peak hour. The traffic study was done, but the traffic study made the assumption that only 60 of those units would be full. But the private nature exists the most significant thing. As you're well aware, a special use permit is a special privilege, it allows for flexibility to be granted in a zoning decision. In every zone, there, in every zoning ordinance that are permitted uses, there are non-permitted uses, and then there are conditional uses or special uses that can be approved. But by the county's own language and its ordinance, it talks about, there should be a very careful analysis of the specific application of the permit. Our view is that that, that close attention hasn't been given, and there's a lot of reasons for that, I'm not being critical in saying that, but we believe that if there would have been and still will be attention to look at the documents, they can find, the staff can find the same things that we've been able to find. We've talked to property owners, former property owners, who all have a common understanding, the only one seems to view different is the applicant, we understand that and respect that. But this is very much a private issue, and there's no ability for the county through a decision to take something that's private and make it public unless the county intends to exercise eminent domain. And we're confident that by law, there's no ability to do it either. So we, it doesn't meet your standards, even the proposal, applicant's proposal doesn't meet the standards, the basic standards in standard detail 60. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? All right, it's not a come-back-up one.
I'm the attorney for the applicant, I didn't know if you wanted to hear from me now, I did want to address some of the things raised. Is now when you'd like to hear from the applicant?
Well, if you want to do the, the public comment, or you can wait till somebody has some questions.
I'll wait until it's before the board.
Saying that, I will close the public hearing. Pleasure of the board. Supervisor Lingefelter.
Chairman Johnson, at this time, if, if the applicant's attorney wants to come up, we can hear what he has to say.
Thank you. As you know, the applicant's requesting an RV park on 23 units, I'm in the Littlefield area. The Planning Commission recommended approval, subject to access being confirmed by the county engineer. The applicant is okay with that access being addressed by the county engineer as a condition of issuing the special use permit. We're simply asking that the board allow...
But we believe that if there would have been and still will be attention to look at the documents, they can find, the staff can find the same things that we've been able to find. We've talked to property owners, former property owners, who all have a common understanding. The only one seems to view different is the applicant, and we understand that and respect that. But this is very much a private issue, and there's no ability for the county through a decision to take something that's private and make it public unless the county intends to exercise eminent domain. And we're confident that by law, there's no ability to do it either. So we, it doesn't meet your standards, even the proposal, applicant's proposal doesn't meet the standards, the basic standards in standard detail 60. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wishes to address the board? All right, it's not a come-back-up one.
I'm the attorney for the applicant, I didn't know if you wanted to hear from me now. I did want to address some of the things raised. Is that when you'd like to hear from the applicant?
Well, if you want to do the, the public comment, or you can wait till somebody has some questions.
I'll wait until it's before the board.
Seeing that, I will close the public hearing. Pleasure of the board. Bryce Linganfelder.
Chairman Johnson, at this time, if, if the applicant's attorney wants to come up, we can hear what he has to say.
Thank you. As you know, the applicant's requesting an RV park on 23 units in the Littlefield area. The planning commission recommended approval subject to access being confirmed by the county engineer. The applicant is okay with that access being addressed by the county engineer as a condition of issuing the special use permit. We're simply asking that the board allow us to take that next step forward and, and see if the county engineer feels that the access that does exist there is adequate to service this use. The nature of the access is it's not a publicly dedicated road, and that's not required under the ordinance. There is a 20-foot wide easement for ingress and egress, there is one of those deeds that says private, but there's a difference between private and personal. This is, sure, it's a private easement for 20 feet, but you can use a private easement for commercial use, which has happened. It was a commercial concrete batch plant beginning in the year 2000. That's why the applicant paved the road to Highway 91 and ran concrete trucks up and down that road daily to access his property. So it is a commercial easement, it has been used commercially, it's a recorded easement. The question is whether the county engineer feels it's adequate, and we'd like the chance to, to have the county engineer look at that, evaluate that, and work with the applicant to see if, if that's feasible. So that was my response to those issues.
For the clerk, could you state your name and the firm that you're with as well?
Yes, thank you. Dayton Hall, I'm with the law from Gallyon Wilker and Beckstrom in St. George, Utah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim?
Thanks, Tim. I just want to, you know, read through the backup. Want to hear your take and perhaps the county attorney's office take on the access issue to this person.
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Linganfelder, thank you. Planning and zoning, or Development Services Planning and Zoning have reviewed the application and have recommended approval for the special use permit. The question of the access has been raised as far as whether it's allowable for this use, or whether it's a private, personal, and, and what type of easement that is. The recommendation, and I'll turn the time over to Tyler, but the, the recommendation that was, not the recommendation, but the council given to the Planning and Zoning Commission was, I don't know that we'll be able to answer that, that, that really that's more of a question for the courts to determine whether or not that is a legal access that can be used for this purpose. Really what was presented before the commission and now before the board is whether the use for this property is, is reasonable as being presented. Is this, is this something that the board feels this property should be used, or could be used as a, an RV park at this location? One of the conditions of approval that, that staff and, and the commission recommend is that public access be, public access to the site must be obtained to the satisfaction of the county engineer. Whether that public access is this easement that's been discussed, or whether that public access comes another way, would be up to, to the applicant to provide that, that clear, concise, accurate access to the property and, and be able to prove that it is legal. With that, I'll, I'll ask Tyler what I missed and have him fill in the holes.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Linganfelder, what the board is voting on today is this special use permit. Should this land be approved to be used as this RV park? One of the questions that you're hearing is about access. In granting a special use permit, the board is not required, or the special use permit does not require the access or public access be established prior to the granting of that special use permit. The parties would have one year to make sure that there is appropriate access. As you've heard from attorneys from the, the private parties, they have disagreement as to what the easement means, you know, private use, public use, personal use. And that is not a question for the, the board here to have to deal with. That is something that parties can and should deal with outside of the County Board of Supervisors. It's after and when they deal with that and address that and figure out how to do and provide public access that they can do on their own, outside of this board's decision. So in answer to the question, we're not, the, the board is not being asked to grant or to rule on or to decide, in other words, this private dispute between the parties on the easement. That would be better between the parties, perhaps a court hearing outside of this. The board is just approving or not approving today a special use permit so that the private party, the private owner could, in theory, put an RV park there.
Tyler, do you know, is this easement or access issue, is this being litigated right now?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Linganfelder, I'm not aware of a current case or litigation on it, but I haven't really looked either, so.
It's not? Okay, thank you. Well, I see that it passed the commission but narrowly, and I see who voted against it. And to me, it just seems a little irresponsible to say, yeah, you can go ahead and do something when you don't have, when the access is questionable, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Linganfelder, basically during the development process, an applicant will come in first to see, okay, can I get past this hurdle? Can I, so, so the first, one of the first hurdles they have to look at is zoning, land use, and special use permits. So they'll focus their, their energy on, okay, once they get past that hurdle, then we'll address these future ones. So many times in a, in a rezone or a special use permit, you won't see a full detailed design of, of what's being proposed. That, that'll cost money and, and time and effort. So what you'll see is, okay, one, can we, can we get approval for this type of use on this property? And then once that gets achieved, then later phases are, are then addressed, full access, public access, whichever it is. So you will see at times, you'll see where a development is being proposed without all of the, the loose ends tied up, but basically it's, it's first, okay, is this even possible on this property? Okay, it got approved, now we move on to, okay, how do we tie up these loose ends? Hope that, that helps somewhat in, in explaining kind of the, how we can, or how we can recommend approval for something without all of the, all of the details being clarified.
Thanks, Tim. May I have the applicant's attorney come back up to the podium, please? I have one more question to, for you. Regarding this access issue, how long do you think it's going to take you to, to get resolution on that?
In response to your question Supervisor Linganfelder, there is no pending litigation. In our view, the, the legal documents which were supplied by the, the objecting neighbor's attorney show that there is legal access to the property right now. The question is whether, whether a 20-foot easement is sufficient to support the RV park. And so, so there is no pending litigation. If there were pending litigation, it would be several months before that were resolved, at least.
Great. And lastly, can I get Steve to come up to the podium, please, our county engineer? Steve, just looking to have you give the board your professional opinion on this easement.
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Linganfelder, I have looked at the site to understand the, the circumstances surrounding the easement. As relates to the concept of a public easement, a public thoroughfare, one would have to consider that we would have to align the available right-of-way at least. It could still remain privately maintained conceivably, but the right-of-way providing for a sufficient ingress and egress, 20 feet, is inadequate in that regard. I don't believe in the concept, and this is where it treads into the, the legal requirements and the county requirements, that, again, using the term "public" would exclude our consideration from leaving it as a private driveway. Private driveway, then we would just reserve it to however the applicant owner of the property would wish to treat the, the property. We see private driveways in resort, hotel-type configurations where you come off the main road and however it's maintained. But yeah, in this case, I would think that in the, in the true sense of a public easement, that we would at least have to seek the minimum right-of-way, which would have to be above and beyond the 20 feet.
What do you think would be the minimum right-of-way?
The minimum, and I did, as I was hearing the dialogue, I look at the site, we would have to probably pursue a 60-foot right-of-way. That's typically the right-of-way that is in a more rural area that, 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 that allows for the minimum for a collector-type road function, you know, to a private site, 50 to 60 feet minimum.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Chairman Johnson.
Bryce Linganfelder.
I'd like to make a motion to deny BOs Resolution Number 2021-146. I've just heard from our county engineer, you know, in his professional opinion, it's not, it's not wide enough access, you know, that's 20 feet here, he's talking about 50 to 60, so, you know, they can bring it back to us down the road, and hopefully they'll have the access issue resolved at that time. I'm not comfortable with approving it without the access.
Second. Motion and a second. The only question I would have is, maybe I misunderstood, but the access is not required for the action in front of us today? From the mo-
Oh, sorry.
Survivor, the attorney?
Mr. Chair, this board is able to take whatever decision it decides, whether it denies or grants the special use permit. So I think that was the motion. The reasoning behind the board's decision is entirely independent of that. And, and so Supervisor Linganfelder is saying that he wants access to be provided in the future proposal, that, that's okay. But he is allowed to make a motion and, and support that motion with whatever reasoning he'd like.
Chairman Johnson.
Bryce Linganfelder.
Here's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm saying that I heard Tim Walsh say, and also the attorney say, that they wanted the opportunity to hear our, our county engineer give his professional opinion about the appropriateness or the acceptance of that 20-foot right-of-way. He's testified this morning that, that in his professional opinion, that's not wide enough or big enough. And so I, I feel that if we were to approve their use today, and they go down the road and they work with Steve, they may get denied anyways. So I just want to give them another, another year to get all this stuff figured out, and that's my motion.
Because that, that does kill it for another year. All right, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor, 65 by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. All right, I have a number 59, it's an open public hearing which I will open, amendment to the Mojave County General Plan, Desert Hills Fire District Area Plan. I have a person signed up. John Hayes.
Chairman Johnson, supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is John Hayes. I live in Lake Ridge Estates subdivision in Desert Hills. I just have some concerns. Many of my neighbors did also, but they could not attend this morning. We did go to the zoning and planning when they had their hearing. One of the things is the location. The property abuts Lake Ridge Estates, so we have a direct interest in it, it's contiguous. And the, some of the, one of the streets that goes by, Stratford Street, the rear of those houses would face this proposed development. So just doing some measurements, and it's not 100% accurate because we were working off the diagram the applicant had provided, and at their meeting, they stated it wasn't exactly up to date because they're going to make some revisions. But the distance between the home, the rear of those homes to the property line, tentative property line, would be 100 feet from the rear of their house. It's about 38 feet from the property line at the rear of the house to where their property would begin. So that brings in a problem with noise and things. We have a problem from the car dealerships across the street on Highway 95 occasionally. We call them up, they usually resolve the problem. That's an interesting concept because that's in the city limits, we're in the county limits, so. So that's one of the considerations. Another is, there's a lot of utility lines and things overhead. There's also Lake, Lake Havasu City has a water ma, a water line going underneath for wastewater. I don't know how that would come into play. Traffic, as we all know, traffic on Highway 95 is just growing faster and faster. I don't know what the solution's going to be a couple of years from now, but right now, from early morning until late afternoon, tremendous amount of traffic going by. Hyde Park Avenue is one entrance to Lake Ridge Estates that comes in off the highway, two other entrances come off of Chenoweth. And one of my neighbors the other day slowed down, put a signal on, well in advance, got rear-ended, car got totaled out. So I could only imagine if we're trying to move commercial vehicles or boats or anything across the highway or accessing the highway, so something to consider. Hyde Park Avenue, the one road that comes in from Highway 95, there's a slight curve in it. And if you're coming out of my house and some of the houses on, on Hyde Park, you have to be very careful because people coming down from the highway cannot see around the curve, and they're complying down, and almost got hit once, so. Will this create more traffic on the streets? We're public streets, we're accepted into the county, the county maintains the streets first, they do a great job. But one of the concerns is if they're moving large vehicles through the streets, the residential area. And that would be pretty much what I had to say. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. We have the applicant here, if anybody wants to talk to him after we get going. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to address the board at the public hearing?
My name is Christopher Hughes, I am the applicant. My address is 15904 Wilkes Lane, San Diego, California. And I'm here to urge, urge you to approve the resolution. You know, we, we believe this facility being located right on the highway, the land use, we're trying to bring the land use into compliance with our planned development, a fully enclosed RV and boat storage facility. It is a, an extremely low-traffic use. In fact, we did bring the, brought the traffic engineer, did a traffic engineering study on this and, and found that the number of trips per day is 2% of what Lake Ridge Estates and Canterbury Estates is currently generating on Hyde Park, which is where our access would be. So in terms of additional traffic, we're extremely minimal. It's also, you know, you heard Mr. Hayes talking about the noise, and the fact is, storage, RV and boat storage facilities are, they're always extremely quiet, and there's almost nobody ever there. So, you know, he also mentioned utility lines, and they're actually not over the top of our parcel, those run adjacent to the highway. The water lines also run adjacent to the highway, and on the west side of the highway where this property is located, those water lines are abandoned. The ones on the east side are the current ones that are used. So in, in addition, on the west side of the property that does run adjacent to the housing development, there is a, a V-ditch, it's 30 feet across. There's also a 20-foot, an additional 20-foot access easement because F4 owns a parcel that they need access on our parcel in order to, to get to theirs. So there is this, you know, considerable additional space between this facility and the, the neighboring community. So, you know, with that, I just urge you to approve the resolution, this one and the next one. And also, I thought I'd mention the county benefits, the additional property taxes that come with the development of the property, the sales taxes that go along with storage, and, and, I believe that's all, I'm happy to answer any questions that any of the supervisors have.
Thank you. Let me close the public first. Scott Kelly had signed up, do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait until Steve has any questions? All right, I'll close the public hearing. All right, Supervisor Cool.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could get Mr. Hughes to come back on. Planning and zoning-
Planning and zoning originally postponed a decision on this, they'd asked you to go to the Arizona Department of Transportation to see whether you could get an access off of Highway 95. What did the Department of Transportation tell you?
So, that's correct. We did go back to ADOT immediately, and they immediately responded that for a parcel like ours that already has access on a road that intersects with Highway 95, that they wouldn't grant separate access, you know, because we already had it. And so they want us to use that, and there are a number of reasons, all of them are safety-related. Actually, one of them was, you know, they don't want to have too many additional places to have access to directly to the highway because it affects stacking or signals and stop signs and things like that. So they, you know, they did say that we would have to have access on Hyde Park. They did provide a potential for access on Highway 95, but it would be a right turn-only, right exit, or sorry, right entry, right exit, and we would have to put a median on 95. So that would cause more problems than it would solve because our tenants then would have to go up to Chenoweth and either do a U-turn or they would come through the very, the community that we're trying to direct traffic around and not through. So we didn't view that as a possible solution.
That would also keep the residents from being able to make a left-hand turn onto Hyde Park to enter their neighborhood, correct?
That's a possibility. We really didn't get that far because the access to our facility, we thought would cause more problems for the neighbors than, you know, than we would solve. But what we did do, because the concern about traffic in and out of the facility is what we had proposed to the planning commission was a double pork chop entry and exit from our facility so that nobody exiting our facility could make a turn and go into their neighborhood, and nobody entering our facility could approach our facility and get into the facility because of the driveway design. So you could only access it by coming off the highway or exiting to the highway.
So that way no one could come in off of Chenoweth, work their way through the neighborhood, get to Hyde Park, and then attempt to make, would be then a right-hand turn into your project because they would have to almost make a, what, almost 180 or 120-degree turn effectively with a tow rig and a boat or an RV?
Exactly. So our driveway design precludes our tenants from, you know, maneuvering through their neighborhood.
Okay. You don't allow people to run commercial businesses out of your storage units, do you?
No, it's just RV and boat storage. We have an existing facility, our contractual agreement with all of our tenants states that it's just dead storage, and it's, you know, there's no loitering or no running businesses out of them.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, discussion? Is there a motion? Supervisor Cool.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move that item 59 be adopted.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Impose the same sign, motion carries. Item number 60, I'll open the public hearing, rezone. Board of Supervise Resolution 2021-147. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? Hearing none, we do have the applicants here, I will close the public hearing. Supervisor Cool.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move that item 60 be adopted.
Second.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Impose the same sign, motion carries. Item number 61, I will open the public hearing, Board of Supervise Resolution 2021-148, to rescind Resolution 205-164. Have no one from the public here wish to speak? Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on item number 61? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 61 be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Impose the same sign, motion carries. Item number 62, I will open the public hearing, Board of Supervise Resolution 2021-149, a rezone. I have no one signed up, is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, what is the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Impose the same sign, motion carries. Item number 63, I will open the public hearing, Board of Supervise Resolution 2021-150, it's a rezone. I have no one signed up, is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing.
Chairman Johnson, motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Impose the same sign, motion carries. Item number 64. Open the public hearing. Amendment to the Mojave County Zoning Ordinance, Section 39, Use Permits. I have no one signed up, is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Pleasure of the board.
Supervisor Johnson, I think somebody raised their hand when you asked them. Oh, sorry. Mine.
All right. Do we have discussion or a motion?
Chairman Johnson, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Impose the same sign, motion carries. Go to the regular gen, item number 65, Ms. Lutowski.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Bishop.
I'd like to recuse myself from this item as a family member is involved.
All right. Any discussion from the board? I have a motion from the board.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second? A second? Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Impose? Motion carries. Item number 66. Needs no action. 67's been handled, 68, Supervisor Angus.
Thank you very much. As part of the ARPA distribution that we agree to go by districts, I bring forth a project that I think is a very good project for my area. It first was started about in 2017, it's a community civic park right in the middle of Bullhead City. We do not have any sort of city center like you do in Kingman and Havasu, and the vision is that that would, this would be it. It would have a performing arts center, a stage, pavilion, we call it, and it's, so it is basically a, it would be a county city, the city of Bullhead is also voting tonight on giving some of their ARPA towards this. We believe it's a good project. I wanted to bring this together as a full parks package with the rest of my money, basically, not my money, but the distribution money, let's get that clear. And it would have been a $2.8 million parks package, 2.15 going towards Davis Camp for some much, much needed improvements, upgrades, water fixing, bathroom building, a lot of different things that need to go on in Davis Camp that we've been putting off. This particular project, and then $50,000 for the BMX Park in Bullhead that is really doing phenomenally well, as you heard from Mr. Henry a couple of weeks ago. So if there's no questions, I make a motion to approve.
Now we have someone signed up for it.
Oh, okay.
Comes as a surprise, Scotty.
In total tonight, the Board of City, Bullhead City Council approves $650,000 also, and then Los Matos are kicking in $250,000. We're talking about they're getting $1 million, 300? I added up, where am I at? Oh, $1,550,000. I'm not real happy with the way you guys are spending this $41 million, I wish you would have sent it back, but you're not. This was given to us back in 217, that they were going to raise money for this, and it wouldn't affect the taxpayer down there. Well, all I've seen them do is run a new lawn down there and they mow it, and the electric, they put in double the amount of lights down there than they need, and we're paying the electric bill. They're just a bunch of people that, they live up in the rich part of town, Laughlin Ranch, Fox Creek, et cetera, and they're sucking us, low-life people that live down there by Lazy Harry's, et cetera. I'm tired of, this should have been the fieldhouse, should have been built there instead of where it is. 22 acres there, that would have been built enough, big enough for that, and high school's right there, the kids could use it without having to travel 10 miles down the road for something they can't get into. How many kids you know that live in junior high school that has a car to get down to the fieldhouse? Anyway, this is just, it's too late now to stop them because they've got it built. But, you know, I've seen them trim the palm trees and I just, all this free money when they said they were going to pay for it by themselves instead of me.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Angus.
I think that Scotty proved my point. Everything kind of came to a screeching halt when COVID came in and, you know, it was, the fundraising stopped, the businesses couldn't give in, and we believe that this is one of the things that this ARPA money was for, was for community development, for community use. I believe this is the most benefit for the most people for this money. Because I represent an incorporated city, it's a little different, but this has been approved as a good project, and so I make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Impose the same sign, motion carries. Item number 69, question possible action from Mojave County, District 1's allocation. I'll let Supervisor Lingefelter give that to you.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. As we all know, last year, when the government took it upon themselves to shut off our businesses down, shut our schools down, we found out just how important broadband service can be in all areas of our life. A lot of our small businesses had to switch to online menus, to takeout ordering, to ordering off your website, if they had a website to begin with. My children included had to do all of their schooling online. I feel bad for some of those kids that maybe live in unserved or underserved areas of the Kingman region, not sure how they got through all their schoolwork and assignments, but, you know, our homes were never meant to be classrooms, and most parents were never meant to be teachers, but that was the situation we were thrust into. And we saw when our hospitals were shut down, they didn't want anybody in there that shouldn't be in there, and, you know, unless they absolutely had to be there, they were pushing a lot of telehealth and online health type stuff, so I've been working very closely with the county attorney's office, with our county information technology director Nathan McDaniel, with the procurement department on investment into broadband. So what this issue is, is really we're proposing to issue a request for proposals, which doesn't obligate the county really to anything. The private sector is being asked to come up with a proposal that considers a up to $4 million public ARPA funds match. The ARPA funds being matched would have to be invested strictly into unserved and underserved areas. We've also included a link to the official Arizona Commerce Authority map of unserved and underserved areas. We've included a copy of the grant guidance, and we're going to see if we can get proposals back to bring the whole Kingman region up to at least one gig fiber to the premises broadband solution. So that's really what the item is about. Completely satisfies the grant requirements, it would be investment into the last mile, which in the grant guidance, they encourage last mile investment, so excited to see what comes back from this.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Bishop.
I have a constituent in Dolan Springs that contacted me, she is almost blind and couldn't read this resolution, so I told her that I would see if I could get it read into the record, as she'll be watching this meeting, so. So if Supervisor Lingefelter, would you read the resolution into the record?
I believe we're still on my ARPA broadband issue right now, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the RFP for broadband.
My apologies, I was thinking we were on item 70, so.
All right, we have a motion on item number 69, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Impose the same sign, motion carries. Item number 70. For adoption of the Board of Supervise Resolution 2021-162. Supervisor Lingefelter, I do have two people signed up. Jeff Esposito, Esposito, I'm sorry.
Jeff Esposito, address on record. Congratulations for coming up with something that makes sense. I agree. Vote yes, all five of you better vote yes. Anyone that doesn't vote yes belongs to China. Go support your CCP friends.
Jennifer Esposito, I have more than two.
Jennifer Esposito, Kingman. This resolution is a really good start, whoever the original author was should be commended. However, as Chris Redderty pointed out during the call to the public, there is an issue with a state statute. Now that state statute gives some very frightening powers to the county health director. However, it says the county health director may do certain things. Now the way that local government works is this board sets policy, and department heads are supposed to implement that policy. Therefore, it is my recommendation that if you pass it today, and I hope you would unanimously, that you come back with an amendment to it immediately. You need to take control of the issues with the county health director so that it is clearly defined that although they may do those things, you are not authorizing them to do those things. You do actually have that power. While it would be wonderful if we had an amendment to the state law that would deal with that, I do believe that you have the ability to define the parameters of the job requirements and duties and privileges that the department's heads have. So it's my recommendation that you craft a very careful amendment to this resolution, and that you also pass that resolution unanimously, defining the fact that the county health director should not be given the power to do those things, emergency, non-emergency, whatever. I'm not really sure that you guys are even aware of what is going on or what the county health department does on a regular basis, and I'll just give you one very relevant example of that. I believe it was the 23rd of this month, this county issued a press release through its health department, making a recommendation for a third COVID booster shot, except for one small little problem. The CDC Advisory Committee postponed their meeting to make advice about third booster shots and so on and so forth, and they postponed that till the 30th of August, so a week before So a week before the committee even met, this county issued an official press release recommending people to do something that the CDC hadn't actually really even worked out yet. So, you know, I think that we have a problem. You know, when we look at other countries like Australia where they've gone just crazy over restrictions and things. I think that this resolution is a very good start and I applaud the intent behind it. But I think that you have the ability to address what Chris Rodardi said and put an amendment into this which defines that the health director cannot do those things or can only do those things upon, say, a unanimous approval of this body. Because ultimately, the way government works, you set policy, they follow your policy. They don't get to just have free rein and run rampant and do whatever the heck they want. Thank you.
Ginny Proctor. Proctor.
To follow the bouncing ball. Because if I got three minutes, it's going to be quick. Supervisor Lingefelter, have you ever read a historical account of the pandemic from 100 years ago?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry ma'am, they don't usually not interact, just state your case.
Oh, okay, because I was, it indicated that I can ask questions. So is this your response to being threatened with an empty recall? When the man came up a few months ago and said, Hildy and Ron told them that you're their man and you're going to vote their way. Because you see, the internet never forgets and you put your stuff on the internet.
The internet's never wrong either, right?
Number one, COVID is temporary. They're fully using this to change existing laws to meet their understanding of the Constitution. Number two, by passing this resolution, many more resolutions will come with just changing the COVID to another disease state. And we're already talking about amendments, hasn't even been passed, and they're already planning future amendments. One A. They talk about SCOTUS amendments. They need to write out what those amendments are that they're relying upon. Because otherwise, it's empty words. And one B is very flimsy. One C, Noah's seizing anybody, it's ugly, ugly wording to intimidate people. Along with disability, this has nothing to do with being disabled. I have more disabilities than probably everybody else in this room. Where's the list of disabilities that they want to exclude from getting COVID inoculations? Right now, what it, one D, right now, it appears that people don't want to give up their right to entertainment. They want to go in unvaccinated or with a fake card and infect everyone around them. I'm inoculated. I don't need anybody else's COVID. I'm not sure if these are even getting up on the screen. Okay. 2.1, Pfizer is no longer emergency use only, it's fully funded. It's fully approved. Moderna will be there already. 2.1B, nobody really listens to Deadly Ducey. 2.2, an opinion, what is the definition of an opinion? Legally, an opinion. Because they're basing a lot of this stuff on somebody's opinion. List of disabilities are take it out every single instance. Employers cannot ask about your disabilities. Remember when everybody had the fake cards? I can't wear a mask because I have a card and it says it's against HIPAA law. But now the same people are using that in here.
Thank you ma'am.
I'll be up at the next meeting to finish my speech. Because I have a lot more to say about this. It's a total war and they're using you if their stuff passed because of COVID.
Thank you ma'am. I think that's the last person. Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you Chairman Johnson. I had this item placed onto our board agenda today in support of the actions of the Arizona Legislature, the Arizona Governor and the Arizona Attorney General solidifying our individual healthcare freedom of choice. If you have to carry a pass on your phone or carry a card in your pocket proving that you were coerced into injecting something into your body in order to keep your employment, to gain access to a grocery store, to receive medical care, or to freely move about society, then you no longer live in a free country and you are no longer sovereign over your own body. And that should concern everyone regardless of political party or individual medical choices. Martin Luther King said, "The arc of history bends towards justice." And today, the votes of our Arizona legislators, our Arizona county supervisors, our Arizona city councils, and our Arizona school boards matter more than ever to assure that justice is maintained in the state of Arizona. The best advice that can be given on this issue of the COVID vaccination is to have as many serious conversations as necessary with your paid primary care physician that carries professional liability insurance and medical malpractice insurance to practice medicine. And then to choose what you believe is in the best interest of yourself and your family members. If the proposed resolution needs to be read into the record, I'd be happy to do that, Mr. Chairman, or we could ask the clerk of the board to do that, it's up to.
Their way, if you want to read it or have the clerk.
All right. You know, I wish you would have brought me another water, but I'll go through it here as briefly as I can. Whereas this resolution shall serve as an adopted statement in support of individual healthcare freedom of choice and in support of the protection of private healthcare information. And is not to suggest that a COVID-19 vaccination should or should not be taken by any person. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of Mojave County, Arizona is the executive body of county government and the legislative body of county movement pursuant to the provisions of Arizona revised statutes, Title 11, Chapter 2. And whereas the Mojave County Board of Supervisors recognizes the Constitution of the United States of America as the supreme law of the United States of America. Whereas the right to healthcare privacy is not mentioned in the U.S. Constitution, but the U.S. Supreme Court has stated that several of the amendments create this right, including the Fourth Amendment. Whereas the Constitution of the United States, or Constitution of the State of Arizona, excuse me, the Arizona Constitution, is the supreme law of the state of Arizona. Whereas Article 2, Section 8 of the Arizona Constitution also states, "No person shall be disturbed in his private affairs or his home invaded without authority of law." Whereas the Board of Supervisors passed Mojave County Resolution 2021-017 on January 19, 2021, declaring Mojave County, Arizona as a constitutional rights sanctuary county that fully supports and defends the U.S. Constitution, the Arizona Constitution, and the individual freedoms and liberties contained therein. Whereas it is the unreasonable seizure of a person for the government to require a COVID-19 vaccination for all persons regardless of their age, medical status, physical condition, or other factors. Whereas it is an unreasonable invasion of privacy, except in certain healthcare-related exceptional circumstances, to require a person to disclose the status of his or her COVID-19 immunization status for employment, education, access to events, or engagement in commercial and recreational activities. Whereas certain political subdivisions of the state of Arizona, such as the city of Tucson, Arizona, are attempting to mandate COVID-19 vaccinations on all of their employees in violation of Arizona state law. Whereas so-called COVID-19 passports are starting to be used in certain other states and localities, such as the Excelsior Pass Plus being used in New York State. Whereas, as a response to potential COVID-19 immunization passport requirements, the 55th Arizona Legislature in laws 2021, First Regular Session, Chapter 409, passed Senate Bill 1824, Health Budget Reconciliation 2021-2022, which was signed into Arizona law by Governor Doug Ducey and which requires Arizona employers to provide reasonable accommodation to employees with sincerely held religious beliefs, practices, or observances that prevent the employee from taking the COVID-19 vaccination unless the accommodation would pose an undue hardship and more than a de minimis cost to the operation of the employer's business. Additionally, the law prohibits state and political subdivisions from, one, establishing a COVID-19 passport, two, requiring any person to be forcibly vaccinated for COVID-19, and three, requiring a business to obtain proof of the COVID-19 vaccination status prior to entering a business. The law also makes immunizations for which the U.S. Food and Drug Administration Emergency Youth Authorization has been issued, not required for Arizona school attendance. The Board of Supervisors supports these measures by the Arizona Legislature being signed into law by Arizona Governor Doug Ducey. Whereas the Attorney General issued Opinion 121-007, stating that employers who mandate vaccination must provide reasonable accommodations to employees who cannot obtain the COVID-19 vaccination due to a disability or a sincerely held religious belief. In most cases, this will require employers to accommodate such employees by using the same measures utilized by employers for approximately the last 17 months of the pandemic. Any employer inquiry into a disability or sincerely held religious belief must genuinely serve the employer's asserted business necessity and the request must be no broader and no more intrusive than necessary. Whereas while the U.S. Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA, is not actively enforcing 29 CFR 1904's recording requirements through May 2022, requiring any employers to record workforce, or excuse me, worker side effects from COVID-19 vaccination. OSHA will require the agency's position after May 2022 to determine the best course of action moving forward. And as such, until that time, if a person believes that their health and safety are in danger, the person or the representative has the right to file a confidential safety and health complaint with OSHA in accordance with 29 CFR 1904's recording requirements. And whereas it is reasonable for a person or parent in his or her personal circumstances to have the individual freedom and liberty to make his or her own informed healthcare decisions on whether or not to get a COVID-19 vaccination. Whereas vaccination information statements, also known as VISs, are documents produced by the CDC in consultation with panels of experts and parents who properly inform vaccines about the risks and benefits of each vaccine. Federal law under the National Childhood Safety Vaccine Injury Act requires a healthcare professional to provide a copy of the current VIS to an adult parent or to a child's parent legal representative before vaccinating an adult or child. Yet, VISs for the COVID vaccine have not been developed for distribution. Whereas it is unreasonable and detrimental to credibility, trust, fairness, justice, business, and educational relationships for governments, businesses, or schools to force persons to obtain a coerced COVID-19 vaccination when there is significant information yet unknown. Whereas it is not unreasonable for a person or a parent to use critical thinking and reasoning in addition to meeting with their paid primary care physician with regard to evaluating COVID-19 information individually and with their family. And it is not unreasonable to declare that individuals nor any members of their household should ever be bullied, coerced, incentivized, persuaded, pressured, punished, quasi-criminalized, or shamed for the personal and private health choices they make for themselves and with the members of their household after consulting with their paid primary care physician. Whereas not all persons are at high risk for death or significant adverse long-term effects from COVID-19 as evidenced by the data table published by the CDC and an individual risk factor calculator from Johns Hopkins, which also shows the differences can be much higher than 8,700 times. This information demonstrates the multi-factor complexity of the issue and that draconian, overgeneralized unconstitutional mandates like those made in Tucson and New York City are ill-considered and unmeasurable. Now, therefore, the following is hereby resolved by the Board of Supervisors. One, after consultation with their paid primary care physician, as a part of their personal and private doctor-patient relationship, every person or parent who voluntarily chooses to get a COVID-19 vaccination for themselves or their child should be able to do so. And every person or parent who voluntarily chooses to not get a COVID-19 vaccination for themselves or their child should not be required to do so. Two, it is an unreasonable search, or excuse me, seizure of a person contrary to the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution and Article 2, Section 8 of the Arizona Constitution for the government to require a COVID-19 vaccination for all persons regardless of age, medical condition, and other factors. Three, it is an unreasonable invasion of privacy, except in certain healthcare-related activities and other exceptional circumstances, to require a person to disclose the status of his or her COVID-19 immunization status for employment, education, access to events, or engagement in normal, commercial, and recreational activities. Four, Arizona law establishes that the state of Arizona and its political subdivisions of government are strictly prohibited from issuing or requiring a COVID-19 immunization passport. Five, the Board of Supervisors encourages all Mojave County businesses and schools to fully comply with Arizona law and they should avoid any measures or mandates that would propose to require employees, customers, patrons, students, or other persons to get a mandated COVID-19 vaccination or to produce private health insurance information on COVID-19 immunization status, otherwise known as COVID-19 immunization passports. Private businesses that desire to impose any such measures or mandates due to exceptional circumstances, such as healthcare facilities, should provide reasonable accommodations to those who cannot obtain the COVID-19 vaccination due to a disability or a sincerely held religious belief. And I just learned this morning that as of today, the Arizona Attorney General's office just found that the city of Tucson's ordinance mandating all of their employees get vaccinated is unconstitutional. That's all I have.
All right, any other discussion?
Supervisor Johnson.
Supervisor Bishop.
I hand it out to the board members, the Governor's Executive Order 2021-18, title Returning to Our Principles of Governance. Basically, in this document that the governor signed, it pretty much says the same thing. It says, "Whereas it's well-established law in Arizona that cities, towns, and counties have authority granted to them by the constitution laws of the state. However, such cannot be in conflict with state law." It says, "Whereas unlike states, cities, towns, and counties do not have inherent police powers to implement vaccine mandates. And whereas under declaration of emergency, cities, towns, and counties have limited authority for the actions they can take. And whereas consistent with state laws, vaccination passports, and mandates have previously been prohibited by executive order." So the Governor's Executive Order basically says much of what is in this county resolution that we're being asked to vote on this morning. And the, you know, we pride ourselves on limited government overreach and yet we develop a resolution here that's essentially a grab bag full of issues already covered by the Constitution, by state law and the Governor's Executive Orders, specifically the one that I just referred to. And, you know, what I see in this resolution are personal opinions mixed with the Attorney General's legal opinion. I think there's a cut and paste from OSHA, I'm not sure about that. And unconfirmed references to CDC. A resolution like this is, it's not law or an ordinance that's even enforceable. It's simply a statement that's mixed with personal opinions. So I personally think this is already covered. I agree with a lot that's in this resolution, but I can't agree with the writers' personal opinions nor disagree with them, but I don't think personal opinions have a place in a resolution that this board's going to affix our name to. So, I don't know, I think, I think as Supervisor Angus said several years ago, we have too many of these resolutions and they really don't mean anything. So I will be voting no on it. Because I think it's covered in the Governor's Executive Orders and in state law.
Chairman Johnson.
Anyone else Supervisor Lingefelter?
Just to clarify, resolutions are absolutely a statement. This is a statement that I would make loud and proud. Because I think we have to take a stand against the slippery soap that we're starting to see in some of these other places. I, it probably won't make Supervisor Bishop feel any better, but I've worked very closely with the county attorney's office regarding the content of this resolution. Run it by Tyler Palmer several times, at least three times. He's helped me to make sure the language is acceptable legally. And the reason that I put this on for consideration is, indeed, the executive order is in support of healthcare freedom. The state legislature has come out with new law. But there really was no place that all that stuff was combined together for.
that stuff was combined together for our citizens. And I've received a lot of calls, emails from people that are concerned that their private employers are trying to make them get COVID-19 vaccination even though they they don't want it, including pregnant women. They they just don't think that they have enough information to do that. So this is really just a statement in support of of keeping healthcare freedom of choice in Arizona.
Supervisor Cool.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the resolution, and I agree that resolutions are merely words, but we are stating what we believe in the resolution. We're also giving the opportunity for the public to see that the governor and the legislature have passed a law in Arizona that outlaws vaccine mandates. They may not have caught that. Maybe they'll catch this if the local media reports on it. So I think that's a good thing. You own your body. You should not be forced to inject things into your body that you don't want to. And that's what it really boils down to is are we going to let a totalitarian government inject things into our body against our will? Are we going to allow the technocrats to force it to be done? Because our real battle is against technocracy now, not so much against our own government because the government's going to use the the fourth way where they use private businesses to enforce these things on us and limit our participation in public. And if this doesn't do anything, at least it does tell the people that the legislature of Arizona, along with the governor, have passed a law that says you're not required to take a vaccine, you're not required to produce a vaccine passport in the great state of Arizona. Thank you.
Supervisor Angus.
Yes, thank you. I I think it is redundant, but I don't think we can say it enough that Mojave County will always go the extra mile to protect your freedoms, and that's what really this is about. So I'm going to proudly vote yes for it.
Chairman Johnson, if I could finalize my statement.
Supervisor Bishop.
So as as elected supervisors, our job is to represent the citizens of Mojave County on both sides of the aisle. And and hopefully, we all remember that when we make these decisions as we're setting up here as your Board of Supervisors. But telling half the population what they can and cannot do with their own bodies or their business, I don't think is our position or our job. And the governor has already passed laws that state there will not be vaccine passports in Arizona, there will not be mandatory vaccinations. So I I don't think this is this is necessary. And because there's so much legal cut and paste in this resolution, I I'm not comfortable with with a bunch of cut and paste from various different places being placed into a resolution. I I think if this was something that we wanted a legal document prepared for as a resolution, that maybe our county attorney should have been the one to write it rather than to just read it and and agree. I'd kind of like to hear from our our county attorney.
Mr. Chair Supervisor Bishop, I have reviewed the document for legal references to make sure they are, you know, accurately stated legal references, you know, when citing, for example, the Fourth Amendment or the AG opinion or or the passed laws by the Arizona Legislature. That's what I have done. I am not forming an opinion or voting on the resolution. I I was just checking the legal references to make sure they are accurate.
Supervisor Lingefelder.
Amy Johnson, I'd like to make a motion to
I I got a statement if you give me a chance. I guess my problem with it is same thing we've discussed before is resolution is not binding on anybody. We're making a statement for the entire county. Over fifty percent of the people in my district have had their vaccines already, not hearing the outcry that they're none of these things we can do. I guess that bothers me because we don't have the authority to put the passport in or mandate shots. When we talk about shots, there are court decisions, you know, when it goes to an extreme of pandemic situation or whatever, where they do mandate shots, but I'm pretty sure this will never happen here. So I think we're just fanning the flames. So that was all. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of B O S Resolution 2021-162.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Nope.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I remember seventy-one, discussion possible action, approve additional changes to the call of the public address. Supervisor Lingefelder, I do have two people that signed up. If you want to hear, or no, I have more than two. Want to hear from them first?
Yes, sir.
All right. Jeff Esposito.
There's too much wrong with this little thing that you're trying to do. It's a slippery slope, freedom of speech. I'd like to ask women why she didn't read that to her person while she was on the phone instead of wasting ten minutes of everyone's time. And also, go to China, both of you.
All right. Jennifer Esposito.
Jennifer Esposito Kingman, one thing that's abundantly clear is I must be the only person in this entire room who has read the entire body of open meeting law, official publications, as well as the case law supporting it. Speech at public meetings called by government officials for discussion of matters of public concern is entitled to normal First Amendment protections against general restrictions or ad hoc parliamentary rulings by presiding officials. City of Madison, four twenty-nine U.S. at one seventy-five and one seventy-six. You know, there's been very narrow definitions of how the public body can restrict speech at the call to the public, time, manner, and place. You can restrict the amount of time each speaker is given, you can restrict where it is placed in the agenda, but manner restrictions have to be viewpoint neutral. In other words, you can wring your hands about civility or decorum, but the bottom line is you can't legislate it, you can't restrict it. You know, speech that you hate isn't hate speech. People, when you give them a call to the public, now, you could go back to the old days where you had no call to the public, but once you have a call to the public, that three minutes belongs to the people out here to say basically anything they want. When it comes to manner restrictions, what they're referring to is you you can't disrupt the meeting by, let's say, screaming expletives for your entire three minutes because that would be a disruptive thing. You cannot use speech that incites to violence. All right? And you you could not, if it were an agendized item, say, you know, on a rezone, talk about paving a road. Okay, that would be that would be an improper manner of speech because it wouldn't be related to the specific thing. But when you give the public three minutes, they have every right to redress their grievances in any way they see fit. That does not only include elected officials, it includes public employees who are public servants paid by the taxpayer. That means the taxpayer, their employer, has the right to criticize their inadequate or poor job performance. You can't you can't silence their free speech to do that because you don't like their point of view. You know, I mean, it's really frustrating that I should even have to get up here and tell you what the law is because one of the requirements for being elected official is that you're supposed to review open meeting law. I mean, that at least it says so right on the Secretary of State's website. You know, there there's a lot of case law involved in this that's behind us, but the bottom line is you either have to decide if you're going to let people say what they want to say or not because just because it it makes you uncomfortable doesn't mean you have the right to limit it. Offensive speech, political speech, is absolutely the most protected.
Thank you. Mark Shaver.
No, just wondering where your hat is.
Me of Arizona. To went to ARS thirty-eight dash four-three dot zero-one H. A public body may make an open call to the public. Is it right there? Anyone who's ever worked with the general plan knows those three words, should, shall, may, may. So at any time during this board decides they want to, may do away with it. It may. It's may. Out of everyone on that side of the red tape there, there's only two people who actually voted for call to the public. And only one voted yes. And I remember that person descending those third case before she became a court member. There's only a handful of people in this audience right now who remembers that. None of you guys were even here. It took a lot of work to get it here. Basic decorum and civility is what's needed. I mean, yes, it's protected speech, but that's no excuse to be vile. Two thousand and nineteen, I remember a board member in his appointee said some terrible things, but we didn't get out of line. We didn't. You remember that. Sometimes we're going to have to step outside the box and do something we don't like, especially when it comes to healthcare and water-related issues. Got to rock the boat, even if it costs you votes. Sometimes we got to step outside the line, especially these days because we're making resolutions based on bad information. And sooner or later, we're going to have to pick a lane and choose a side on truth and information. You have down there in Phoenix, the FBI and Homeland Security, you can come out here and tell you what to look for when it comes to bad information and good information. And you should have a public meeting here so the public can look at what information is bad information. Because you're getting a lot of it from these people. And I see it all the time, as many as you know. I I monitor a lot of sites, and I get a lot of grief, a lot of grief. You know that. Y'all know that. At some point, it has to be dialed back, and that requires leadership from all of you because you're the ones we voted for. Some of us did anyway, but you're all there in the leadership spot, leadership spot. Now, they have a right to say what they want to say, but you got to stand and pick a lane.
Thank you, sir. Scotty McClure.
I hear ya. I don't know if this is going to show up on this thing here, but I grew up with this in my hallway when I was growing up in the fifties and the sixties. My dad put it up. I don't know if this is going to work or not, but it's Norman Rockwell's Freedom of Speech. I grew up with this, and I still believe in it. Still learning about it, and I'm getting tired of it getting chipped away. We do this with this Second Amendment, right, Ron? They keep chipping away at it. And I keep still voting NRA, and I'm not going to let them chip away at it. Same thing with this. This is you put this on here two weeks ago, and you didn't like what happened, you didn't like it because it wasn't enough. You're chipping away at our free speech up here. I shouldn't even have to fill out this stupid form. She knows who I am and my address and phone number. I bug her so much, she probably knows it by heart. Other comments relate to board jurisdiction and board business. If I want to sit up here or stand up here and play the flute for three minutes, I should be able to do that. That actually happened, Ron, in this other county I was at where I grew up at, and it cleared the room. He was so bad. But you guys had to. I'm serious, Hildy. This was in Humboldt County in California, of all places. It cleared the room. But they, those five board members, had to stay there for that three minutes. They could have probably snuck out to the bathroom, but that's what I would have done. He was terrible, but he had free speech to do that. I shouldn't, like I say, if you fill out this form, it's not free speech anymore because I've given the government my name and address, and I should be able to do this as an anonymous audience member. And I tried that once, and he shut me down. I had it filled out, my name is A A M. Remember that, Jean? Said, who in the heck, what's an A M? Yeah, okay, you were you were sitting in Buster's chair then. So I'm whatever. It's just you keep chipping away at this, and you've already thrown gotten somebody thrown out of here as far as cutting them off before the three minutes was up. You know, I'm not going to, I had a lot of problems with Gary Watson, but I never went after him. You know, I just go, well, he's got free speech too to cut me down, but I should be able to call you an S O B.
Kenny Works.
Kenny Works, Yacka, Arizona. I agree with Hildy. You can't say it enough. A new governor can come along and change it. That's why we need to have it. Authority. More and more is replacing evidence. That's why we need to have a call to the public. I voted I voted to disapprove the modifications because I don't know what they are. I don't remember what happened at the last meeting, word for word. So I I voted that I I I'm against the modifications, even though I don't know what they are, but that's the main reason I voted against them. But authority more and more replaces evidence, and that's history is abounds with examples. The Spanish Inquisition, for example. The French Revolution, the Russian Revolution, there was authorities took over, and nobody had any evidence to, and they wouldn't allow any evidence to go against them. But I think that's the main reason we have a call to the public. And we this wasn't even an issue until COVID came along. People wanted to know the evidence, and all of a sudden, that became a problem with the supervisors that we somehow we need to change this, change this around so people won't be begging for the evidence all the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the last one. Supervisor Lingefelder.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Just to clarify a little bit why this was placed back on the agenda, we're actually not including more than what was approved last time. We're actually taking stuff away. I went through and in number one, for example, how last meeting we had, how their comments relate to board jurisdiction and board business. And and I'd like to see that go away. I agree with a lot of the speakers that if we're going to have a call to the public, you've got three minutes, you should be able to say whatever you want. I personally don't agree with personal disparaging remarks and slurs and things like that. My opinion is if you have to resort to that type of stuff, then you need to raise your argument. But it's your right. So, you know, really, this can be whatever it needs to be, but I would hope that it would be as open as possible to allow people, if they want to play the flute for three minutes or if they want to read excerpts from the Constitution, they're able to do that. That's their right to do that. That's
Yes. Supervisor Angus.
Chairman Johnson, thank you. So are you saying that you want to go back to what it was before we added stuff to the original one, or do you want to take more stuff out?
You know, I think we should open, obviously, to the discussion of the whole board, but I'd like to see it become less restrictive.
And I think that that could be accomplished by just going back to what it was before we voted last time. The only one that it said speakers should not verbally attack or impugn board members, which is just a suggestion. You should not. I think that's just common courtesy. And then, but we added speaking privilege will be terminated if speaker fails to comply. That's the kind of stuff you want taken out, anything that makes it more restrictive. I'm just trying to get to a place where, you know, we can start. I'm just trying to get to a place where, you know, we can start, which would be the, the form before we voted.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. That's, that's what I would support. And I mean, by all means, if you want to make a motion or suggest language, then.
I guess with, with mine, I disagree that there's a right for anybody to have a call to the public. I agree that we have a right to elect our representatives. And I agree that we have a board meeting here to conduct the county business. And the idea that people can get up and talk about whatever they want or play the flute is a waste of my tax dollar. Maybe somebody else thinks it's a good use of their tax dollar. It's a waste of all the employees' times that we have and the people that are sitting here waiting in the audience to get some of theirs heard. I believe it's a business meeting. I, I just think that if we're going to have a town hall, have a town hall and let people talk about whatever they want. It's not that I'm against whatever they say. I'm just, we have a meeting to do, and I see our country getting away from all rules that we had. And, and I think civility is something that, that we need to put in. You can still disagree and, and not be, you know, calling people names and things, you know? And while we all have thick skins and stuff, you look at a business that's coming to locate to Mojave County and they see a copy of our board meetings, some of these, I wouldn't bring my people here and I wouldn't bring my employees here either. But that's just my.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Bishop.
I can, I can agree with the changes that Supervisor Lingefelter is recommending, with the exception of number two. He has put that the, the speaking privileges will be terminated by the Board of Supervisors' Chairperson. First of all, I disagree with putting in acronyms. If, if it's going to pass, that should be spelt out, Board of Supervisors, rather than BLS. That's just a minor point. But I think, rather, I'd like to see that replaced by the parliamentarian rather than the, the board chairman. I think the parliamentarian is, is our, our deputy county attorney. He's sitting there listening, uninvolved in the actual conversation or the votes, and he should be the one to make that call. But the rest of it, I have no heartburn with. So Chairman Lingefelter, if you're looking for a motion, I'll, I'll put that in the form of a motion that we agree with your changes with that one exception. Number two should be privileges will be terminated by the parliamentarian if the speaker fails
I'd like, I'd like to ask again for Supervisor Angus to revisit what you were saying about going to the.
Well, if I remember correctly, when we did this last meeting, that's what we did. That was the motion, I believe, I made, but it didn't pass. And so I'd like to ask Supervisor Gould, because you specifically said at the last meeting that you didn't want anything to impede. So does that mean going back to the way it was? Or do you want to even change it more? Because what it says, everything is kind of suggestive in the original form. And, you know, I think it was working, I believe it was working pretty well. And these were the things that, reason it was brought was because of things that had happened, that we want to control. You know, if anyone watches YouTube or, or all the stuff that's going on at, at school board meetings, and it is a slippery slope, you know? I've said this all along, has never changed. I believe people have a right, I'm sorry, Chairman Johnson, I know you disagree, to have their three minutes in front of their elected body to basically say whatever they want. And I will always fight for that. Because like Mark said, it was, it was hard fought to get that in the beginning. So again, I'm asking Supervisor Gould's been quiet, what he would like to see happen.
I would just repeal the rule that was passed at the last meeting and go back to how it was before.
Mr. Chairman.
County Manager.
May I participate in this discussion?
Would love to have.
So to you and the board members, please recognize that I brought this item. I placed this item on the board agenda last time. And introducing it, I stated to you that I felt compelled to bring it to you. And the reason for that was the language and the personal attacks that were taking place during the board meetings and specifically on staff. These are professionals. They do their best based on the information they have. And they serve the board to the best of their ability. And if, if there is disagreement, we understand. Nobody's perfect. But to attack our integrity and our personal beliefs and us personally is really unacceptable. There's no excuse for it. I, with all due respect, I hear you all express your opinion related to freedom of speech. We understand it. If you can criticize my work in so many ways, but don't, there's no reason to call me name and to impugn my integrity and, and personality and heritage and any of that. So if you want to question my professionalism, look at my credentials. But to just appear here in public and attack me or any of the department heads for, for presenting to you the board objective information to the best of their ability, in my humble opinion, is really unacceptable. And that is why I put it on the agenda and made the suggestion that was made last time and the board adopted. So, you know, if you want to, if you want to tweak it as you see fit, you have that discretion and, and that prerogative. And if you appeal it, you can do that too. But please recognize, it's going to take us back to what we were dealing with. And, and that's, you know, it's hard enough hiring people and retaining people as it is. So I, I appreciate you allowing me to be candid with you. I feel strongly about this matter to the point that I put it on, on the agenda in the first place. Thank you.
Did you have something, Supervisor Gould? And I guess going on there with, with the county manager saying, we talked about, everybody's talking about, oh, it's the freedom of expression, everybody's right to do this. How many people from my district have shown up to speak here? Not very dang many. You know, it's the same group of people, not that they don't have a right to speak, but, you know, it's not the entire county showing up to say that we're doing a bad job or I disagree with something that one supervisor or the other has done. That's the problem I have, and I think that things should be in our jurisdiction to, if we're going to discuss things. But I'm done. Supervisor Bishop had a motion. Do we have a second on that? Dies for lack of a second. Do we have another motion or is the item dead?
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
I'd like to make a motion to revert back to the prior form, but I would like to suggest one change, that the parliamentarian would have the option to, to curb the speaking privileges if they are being extremely verbally abusive to staff.
Motion to discuss? Again, we go by the ARS 38-431, and I don't think that the lawyer should intervene. I think if, if there's something that the chair finds so outrageous, it's up to the chairman to stop it. I don't think we should hand that over to the lawyer.
I'll change my motion. I agree with that. It should be the chair.
And I think that's the way it's always been. I mean, even when I was chairman, there were some times I've had to stop people. I mean, it's, it's up to the chairman. But, you know, going back to your argument that it's, it is a few people, and we know pretty much what it's going to say, but there might be a time when the entire county wants to come and tell us we're doing a rotten job. And we want to make sure people know that they can do that. The Chairman Johnson, that being the case, then it's my understanding that Supervisor Lingefelter's amended call to the public would be correct then, other than I'd like to see the BLS changed to the actual wording. Is that your understanding?
Board of Supervisors Chairman, Chairperson, excuse me.
Yes, instead of just BLS, spell it out.
Yeah, reverting, reverting back to the, the prior form. And the only addition would be that it'd be at the discretion of the Board of Supervisors' Chairperson to correct somebody if they're being extremely verbally abusive to a staff
Does anybody have a copy of the original wording? Okay, I have.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We might want to refer to state statute, what state statute says that you can remove somebody from the hall for. That way, we're within the state law, rather than something that might be subjective or arbitrary. Thank you.
Should we just bring this back next time and try to get it right?
I don't, I think the clerk has some comment or perhaps Supervisor.
Chairman Johnson, Supervisors, the, the actual state statute that, that rules over public, calls to public, is actually printed on the agenda and the form. So it, it is provided for you guys. That's, just wanted to let you know it's there.
Can you clarify for me? Does it say that you have to be under the purview of the Board of Supervisors?
Chairman Johnson, the actual verbiage that pertains to that actually states in the statute that says, "A public body may take an open call to the public during a public meeting, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the public body shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action." That, that is the statute that pertains to it.
So we'd need to change that because you want to let everybody talk on everything.
Chairman Johnson, I cannot change statutes.
No, not you. The board, I'm sorry.
Chairman, Chairman Johnson, we, what we've been doing has worked for eight years, since I've been on the board, going into nine years. We're changing something that 99.9% of the time worked for maybe one, maybe two people who are out of line. And, and I think that that is the job of the chair. You know, you may think something's different than me, but within the framework of the statute, I think that's the way it's supposed to work.
Well.
As the chairman, I mean, like today, for instance, there were some things said, and I frankly was surprised that you didn't stop. I don't think it should be stopped by the lawyer. I think that's kind of cowardly. If, if whoever's the chair, I'm not calling you coward. I'm just saying that whoever the chairman has that power already, because it's at the discretion of the chairman.
We voted last meeting to have the parliamentarian be the attorney, so that was the attorney. And I, and I've learned my lesson being this chairman, that every time I make a decision, the board brings it back and decides that the chairman is not supposed to do that. So I, I find it hard to believe that we're going to have a chairman up here, whether it's me or anybody else, who feels they should make any decision if it's just going to be overrun by the rest of the members, to let everybody do everything they want.
But we're talking about a case-by-case situation like today, because again, 99.9% of the time, it's, it's just a very small thing. And that, if you think that it is profane or it's, then it's up to the, it's up to the chairman to stop it. Like in the whole eight years, I believe I stopped some, I believe you stopped some, I believe you stopped some. You know, to, it's kind of like passing the buck and changing it up just for something that can be handled locally.
That's true. I have stopped some and then had the county attorney say that the speaker can continue.
But was it just you didn't like their content or that they were attacking?
I don't remember. I just remember the county attorney has different views than maybe the chairman.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just note, what the board is talking about now is the call to the public. The rules of order that govern these meetings that this board adopts states that the chair and/or the parliamentarian shall not allow debate, to digress, to personal attack. And, and so if we're looking at who makes those decisions, then perhaps we should be looking at the rules of order as well. And, and I don't have a preference, right? I, I'm okay with whatever the board decides, whether it's the parliamentarian's role or the chairman's role. But it, but we may need to be looking at both the call to speak as well as those rules of order.
Chairman Johnson, so whatever decisions made, it would, if you could include that in whatever motion is made, to change both so they both match. Otherwise, they contradict each other.
It sounds to me as though the rules of order are more what's, what's of concern here than the actual form to speak. If, if it's already in the rules of order, which it is, then the chairman already has the option to ask somebody to either elevate their argument or to stop. Correct? So if we were to go back to the original form, the, the conduct is, is, is still, still there, right? And perhaps we could reference those rules of order on the board action form as well.
So if you go that way, then is our, because if it says under the jurisdiction or purview of the board, are we still going to allow flute playing?
Allow what?
Flute playing. I mean, we have a lot of items that are brought up that have nothing to do with us, that we can have no control over at all. And while that might be good for that person's three minutes to get their timeout, it's not furthering the issues of the county business. Want to promise to never bring this in front of the board again?
No. I do, it's, it's, I think we spent far too much time on this issue already. You know, I'd like to make, again, make a motion that we go back to the prior form, that we reference on that forum, the code of conduct that has been adopted by the Board of Supervisors, and, you know, that the chairman, chairperson, excuse me, would have the discretion to ask somebody to elevate their argument or to step away from the podium if they're being severely verbally abusive to a staff member.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Aye. All right. Item number 72, discussion possible, authorized, Board of Supervisors, District Three Projects. I have two people signed up, or one person signed up, Mary Van Rooy. I had two.
Hello, my name's Mary Van Roy. My address is 4034 Blue Canyon Road, Lake Havasu City. And I want to thank Chairman Johnson, Supervisors, and staff that we support a yes vote on item number 72. And I'm speaking for other Horizon Six Improvement District members, all of us who worked on the petitions and neighbors and friends and that that live out there. I think we all would argue that the federal stimulus funds are our tax dollars, and maybe we need to reelect people or get other people out because they are spending our tax dollars. But this is for a very good use of the funds. And because you have to specify safety and water and internet and health, it fits right in. Our water system is very well documented of our problems, and it's been in the newspapers. We've been before the board with all our complaints and issues. So obviously, we're thrilled at this solution. And I think the only thing we'd ask is that we continue to be communicated with and updated on what's going to happen, and hopefully you'll pass this. If you do, thank you very much.
Was there anybody else signed up? I thought I had two. No? Okay. It's mine. And without, if anybody has anything, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We have a presentation by our Health Director.
Chairman Johnson, members of the board, I have a fairly lengthy presentation, so I can par it down, and then certainly open it up for questions as we go along here. But first, I want to make a statement, and I think it's important to be made here. Public health has a responsibility, really an obligation, to share the most current, credible, scientifically proven data, research, and information available to county residents, to you, as county leaders. And as this statement relates to COVID-19, our sources continue to be the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and the Arizona Department of Health Services. I realize there are some that have lost faith and confidence in those agencies. However, there are plenty others who still consider that to be the best source of information. As you know, the guidance has changed as researchers learn more about the virus, including how to prevent the spread, improvements in testing capabilities, the effectiveness of treatment options, and, you know, the vaccines, of course, the effectiveness of those. We will continue to serve the public in this manner to ensure residents are informed of the conditions that are currently in our community. That is our job. What I want you to keep in mind is that this is a new virus, never seen before, and it takes time to research. We're 17, 18 months into this, and there's still research ongoing on multiple facets of this, and in multiple areas. So, and in this research, we're looking at developing testing methods, evaluating treatment options again, and developing testing and manufacturing safe and effective vaccines that prevent or significantly reduce the severity of the illness in hospitalizations and death. This virus is a global pandemic, and not limited to the United States, Arizona, or Mojave County. Every country is grappling with how to limit the spread of the virus, and its impact on vulnerable populations and healthcare systems. So, what I'd like to cover today are really just some basic trends, again, that we've been seeing. So I'll go through some of that information with you. And I believe I have some slides that'll give you some visual information as well. So, we'll go on to just the general trends that we've seen, and the general information. So we've had 26,127 cases to date in Mojave County, 2,477 individuals ever hospitalized, 751 deaths, 22,829 recovered. Our average age of case, 45.8; average age of death, 73.7. Case fatality rate, as it has, has sat right around that 3% area. 12.2% of our population has experienced COVID, and 15.8% is our percent of positive tests during the entire pandemic. So some other general trends here. COVID transmission in Mojave County remains high, with a case rate of 304 for every 100,000 population, and a percent positivity at this point of about 16.8. We have the highest percent positivity across the state, according to the ADHS school dashboard. Case counts in Mojave County are at the highest level seen since January of 2021. Cases reached a recent peak the week of 8/14. They remain high, but they have plateaued in the last couple of weeks. So that's a great sign. It's nice to see, and we hope that will continue or go down. The average age of cases continues to decrease throughout the pandemic. The average case age in Mojave County is 45.8 years old. However, the average age for August was 38.1. So those that are more at risk, or those that are younger, are becoming ill faster, or more frequently. The largest percentage of cases in August came from the 11 to 19 age group, which contributed 17.1% of cases, followed by the 30 to 39 age groups at 14%. So what we're seeing is our school-age kids are more impacted by this. And we certainly want to keep schools open. That's our priority, as well as everyone else's. This just gives you the chart, which is cases and deaths by week of diagnosis. And I can make these available for you as we go along. Sorry, it went back. Hey, Jeremy, can you help me out? Thank you. All right. We've got case count by month of diagnosis, so you can see the EPI curve going on there. And that's since January of this year. Average age of cases, as you can see, has changed month to month. So we've gone from January at 48.1 to August 38.1. Unfortunately for us, as you know, many of these people are relatively healthy. And so they're, they have their own natural protection. Okay, and then we've got average age of death by month. As you can see, that's dropped down somewhat as well. All right. So, some of the trends in death numbers that we've seen, the number of deaths by week of diagnosis increased substantially during the month of July. August saw a reduction in deaths by week of diagnosis. However, there's a lag time, as you know, in reporting deaths, and oftentimes our numbers, previous week numbers in deaths will change as a result of that. So it does take a little bit of time to get there. The average age of death in Mojave County throughout the pandemic has been 73.7 years old. However, this average has decreased to 71.6 for 2021. And the average age of death has been below 70 years old since April of this year. Additionally, Mojave County is seeing a large number of deaths in the younger age groups compared to the start of the pandemic. In August, nearly a quarter of all COVID deaths were under the age of 60 years old, with an average age of 67.2. So that's been a change for us, certainly. We'll move on to hospitalizations. After a decrease in the spring of 2021, hospitalizations have begun to increase. 157 COVID hospitalizations reported in the month of August, the largest number of hospitalizations in one month since January 2021. The average age of COVID hospitalizations in Mojave County is 66 years old. However, this age average continues to drop due to an increasing number of hospitalizations in the younger age groups. August had an average age of hospitalization of 61.5, with 41.4% of hospitalized cases under 60 years old. So that is a change for us here locally. Sorry, Jeremy, I did it again. Thanks. All right. So we've got our average age of hospitalization, starting January, was 68.6, and then at this point, it's 61.5. Next, we have school-age children reports. There continues to be elevated COVID-19 case rates among children 5 to 18 years old. Cases have increased so rapidly over the past six weeks, that cases reached almost to the highest, almost to the level seen in December of 2020, when Mojave County had the highest level of cases in the past year. The week ending August 28th had the third highest case count for children in this age group since the pandemic began. In August, there were 629 cases in children between 5 and 18 years old. This is a 149.6% increase over the 252 cases in July. And again, these are kids, really children, who are unable to be in school for approximately 10 days if due to illness. Yes, Supervisor.
Question on this slide, if I could. How many of these children have been put into the emergency room, or died, or passed away?
I don't have any specific numbers, Supervisor Ling and Filter, on those that have been hospitalized by age group.
Okay, thank you.
For us, the focus is really keeping kids in school. Right. One of the key comments that have been made in the last couple of weeks, or last two board meetings, has been about the PCR tests, and CDC's discontinuation of one of its tests. And I have some comments that were provided to me, that were made to a board member. And if I could read some explanations for those, I would appreciate it, so that you can see the reasoning behind the change. So, the first comment was, since no qualified virus isolates of the 2019 NCOV, novel coronavirus, were available for CDC use at the time the test was developed, and the study conducted assays designed for detection of the 2019 RNA tests were tested with characterized stocks of an in vitro transcribed full-length RNA spiked into a diligent, consisting of human A549 cells and viral transport medium to mimic clinical specimen. So, in response to that, when viral, when actual viral isolates of a new pathogen are not available, this is typically how a molecular detections test is developed, rather than waiting to get an isolate of SARS-CoV-2, and delay the test development. PCR tests can be developed without an isolate of the virus using the genetic code of the virus, which was available and published at the time of sequence databases online. The FDA permits this process of mimicking a clinical sample when actual clinical samples are not available. Again, the test development would be delayed by waiting on an actual clinical sample. And the goal was to get the test out quickly. And I believe that was managed well on their part. And since that point, of course, many other manufacturers have come forward and made PCR tests. And that is exactly why they're discontinuing this test, is because there are many out by private companies, in addition to the fact that the new CDC test includes influenza A and influenza B. So it can actually detect COVID-19, and influenza A, and influenza B. So it can separate those out.
Supervisor Gould.
Denise, so did the new test use actual COVID-19 virus? Or was it another, where they plugged in the DNA sequence?
So, my understanding, Supervisor Gould, is that they were able to mirror the, using the genetic code.
So they plugged in the genetic code into the test, rather than using a sample of the test? Which should be easy to come by now.
Well, and I will check on that for you.
Okay.
And make sure that I have correct information for you.
That would, if they didn't do something different, it would seem kind of senseless to discontinue their assumed test, to use another company's assumed test. But I'm an air conditioning guy, so I don't know. Thank you.
Sure, sure. All right. There's a number of other statements that were made, but if it would be more helpful, I can provide those to all of you, if you'd like to provide those to any of the public who would be interested in seeing those responses. Because they're fairly lengthy, and I realize there's a minimal amount of time here. But I do want to make sure that people get that information. All right.
Supervisor Gould.
Denise, can we also get the slideshow?
Yes, absolutely. Certainly. All right. So we'll look at vaccines next. 36.4% of Mojave County residents, actually, hang on. So it looks like we have 42.4% as of this morning. Yeah, I know, right? 42.2% of people have been vaccinated. That's at least one vaccination in our county, with a total of 7,973 that have been fully vaccinated in our county. So we're looking at about 35%, give or take, right around that range. The majority of COVID cases continue to be among the unvaccinated population. In July and August, 93.5% and 91.8% of cases, respectively, were not fully vaccinated at the time of diagnosis. So.
Denise, could I ask a question about vaccinations, specifically the vaccination information statements that's given out? It's my understanding that once a vaccine receives the full FDA approval, then the vaccine information statements are given to patients. How is that different from the COVID vaccine?
So while the COVID vaccinations are under an emergency use authorization, they provide fact sheets. And the fact sheets contain the same information that the vaccine information statements have in them. Now that Pfizer has been fully approved by the FDA, what I've learned is that they're going to continue to use that fact sheet for now. And then eventually, the CDC will develop a vaccine information statement for that vaccine. But the fact sheets contain the same information that you would find in a V I S.
And that's, that won't change after the FDA approval? Like with Pfizer, will that change the information that's handed out to the?
No. Thank you, Supervisor Bishop. It will not. The information will be the same.
Okay, and that is referenced in our new resolution that we approved, I think it's the whereas number 15. Correct. So that's.
Right. It's a different name, which, you know, if you're looking at it just as a statement from, that those are required, then it's a different name. But it's the same information that's being provided. And every person who gets the vaccination, or who is there to get the vaccination, is given that information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Denise, I posed a question to you offline about, because my goal is not really to stump staff, I'd actually like my questions answered. Whether the Pfizer's actually been approved, or to me, from reading the thing off the CDC website, it appeared that they extended the conditional use permit.
They did not. So, I was looking through your questions, and I have responses to each one. So. So, remains under the EUA for other authorized populations. So it's been approved for 18 and over. But for those that are 12 to 17-year-olds, it's still under an EUA. So that's the distinction there. And do you want me to answer the other questions?
Might as well, related to the same thing.
Okay, all right. So, I'll just pose the question, is it correct that one specific branded version of the vaccine called Comernity? Yeah, okay, right. Was the only vaccine approved under the biologics license application? The formulation of Pfizer Biotech COVID-19 vaccine was the only COVID vaccine that was just approved by the FDA under that application. Now that it has FDA approval, the brand name of the vaccine will be Comernity. The formulation of the vaccine remains the same. Second was, is it correct that there are 13 additional studies to be completed over the next four years before the vaccine is fully approved? It is fully approved for individuals, I'm sorry, my error, 16 and over. So the EUA is in place for 12 to 15-year-olds. Is fully approved for individuals 16 and over, as indicated by the FDA's approval letter dated August 23rd, 2021. There are 13 additional studies that will be ongoing. Three pediatric studies, six assessing for myocarditis and pericarditis, one in pregnancy, one looking at whether low doses of vaccine in 12 to 29-year-olds provides adequate antibody protection, one safety surveillance study recruiting patients for the VA health system, and one by the Kaiser Permanente system for further look at effectiveness of the vaccine itself.
So those things, they'll report on all those things in 2026?
They'll report on them as soon as that work is completed. Correct. Correct.
Denise, are those controlled studies or observational studies?
I believe they're controlled studies Supervisor. And, you know, honestly, you would hope that they're going to continue to evaluate the vaccines. I mean, you wouldn't hope that they would just approve them and be done. You would expect that they would continue to evaluate them and test them and, and create the rigor behind it that you want with every vaccine, not just this. All right. So, great. Is it correct that the other Pfizer vaccine remains under the EUA? So, that, that EUA, as I mentioned, was the twelve to fifteen-year-olds. And they'll still be receiving that under the EUA. What vaccine is being used in Mojave County? Does a county have access specifically to this particular vaccine? We have access to all vaccines that are either under the EUA or approved. At the present time, we can access the J and J vaccine through the matchmaker, which is a way for people who already have it to, and are unable to use it, to move that around to an agency that can use it so it doesn't waste. The Pfizer vaccine and the Comernity have the same formulation. And so, they're not different in any way. It is the same vaccine that people have been getting since late December, January. Okay? Any other questions there? I think I.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mm-hmm, certainly. All right, so what I have up on the, on the screen right now is our COVID vaccination rates in our county, where we can see that sixty point one percent of our sixty-five-plus population are vaccinated. So, this is a pretty low percent. Obviously, we want that to be much higher for their protection. And if you'd like, what I did was also provide the state of Arizona, which puts the state rate at ninety-plus percent. So, we're a lot lower in that range.
Access to the vaccine is not the issue, it's that people are voluntarily, in the higher age sixty-five plus, are they just choosing not to get it?
I'm sorry.
Are they just choosing not to get the vaccine? Because it's readily available in multiple places, correct?
It is, that's correct. Yeah, and I would say that it's not as readily available in some of the rural communities where transportation may be an issue. All right. Any questions so far that I haven't answered? I know you had some.
Denise, do you want me to wait or do you want me to kind of interject? I'm trying to see if it's pertinent to what you're talking about.
Sure.
I'm kind of getting.
Sure.
I did have a question about, well, we're talking about vaccines, because I got the flyer that it's time for flu and pneumonia vaccinations. And it's curious, and we've talked about this, because we don't get any number for flu. It's like the flu disappeared and, and when I ask, like I've asked our hospital people and they contend that all the precautions we've been taking with masks and that, that's how they explain that there was no flu. So, two parts. First, all these vaccinations for different flu, pneumonia, COVID, COVID-1, 2, 3, booster, has anyone, and I'm sure they have, is anyone trying to see if, if that is healthy, all these vaccinations together? And there's probably going to be more down the road. So, I guess it is about, we've talked about before about the flu numbers that seem to disappear. And when you talk about the kids in school, keeping kids in school, do we have, historically, how many kids between five and eighteen are out this time of year for flu and cold? Because it's flu and cold season. And so, if we're not keeping track of that, how do we know that? I mean, I know that they're having tests, but, you know, there's a little debate about what the test picks up. And so, it's kind of like we're back to almost square one.
So, let me address all the questions that you, or statements that you've made. So, in terms of the safety of the vaccine, generally, people are getting them spread out. They're not getting all of them on one day and, and so they might get flu and pneumonia on a day, but those also might be spread out as well. And I'm not sure about the timing of them. Certainly, our nursing staff can speak much more eloquently to how those are scheduled out.
So, if, when we give the flu vaccine to our employees, are we asking those questions? When was the last time you, did you have your COVID vaccine? When did you have it? Are you plan, I mean, do we keep track? If you're saying that it's up to the providers to make sure people know this information, it seems like something for the educators out there, but it's happening now.
Right, right. So, flu season generally doesn't start until the end of October or into October and further on through the winter. So, we're not quite into flu season. So, in terms of whether or not we would see the number of kids out of school today that we do for flu, the answer is no. We wouldn't. I do have a flu report here, so I can give that to you. Because I realized that was something that was not covered during an actual board meeting, I don't believe. So, if you look at the graph that's up on the screen right now, so you can see the 2017, 2018 influenza season was marked by an exceedingly large number of influenza reports in Arizona and in Mojave County. We had a pronounced peak and, of activity during the weeks of Christmas through the New Year's holiday. And then case counts dropped in mid-January and activity persisted into spring, with the total cases for 2017, 2018 of fifteen hundred and twenty-two. For 2018, 2019 season was marked by a more flattened curve with a less pronounced peak of activity in mid to late December. Total cases there were seven hundred and ninety-three. In 2019, 2020 was marked by the highest and most sustained activity we've seen, ever seen early in the season. Case reports dropped starting in February and dropped to nothing by early March. This coincides with the onsite onset of the COVID pandemic. And people wearing masks. So, that would have been March of 2020, when things were changing pretty quickly. The 2020, 2021 season was marked by an exceedingly low number of cases reported to us. And keep in mind, those cases are reported voluntarily to us. It's not a required, it's not a requirement that providers actually report to us on flu numbers.
But if people are going in and to getting a COVID test, they're not giving flu tests. So, people are sick, they're going, they go and get their COVID test because that's what most people are going to do. But, but nobody is testing to see if they have, you can, can you have the flu and COVID together? I mean, how, how sensitive do they pick up these, this test? That's always been another bone of contention about the sensitivity of the, of the test.
So, the newer PCR tests that actually test for flu, A and B, and, and COVID are very sensitive and can pick up distinctions among each one. Last year, I can't speak to how many flu tests were run. They may have run them along with COVID tests. There are a lot of similarities in some of the symptoms. So, in order to distinguish whether or not it was flu or COVID, they would have needed to run both tests. You know, and, and since they're voluntary numbers, we don't know how many people were actually tested.
I guess with the reporting, because like Supervisor Angus said, if somebody goes in, they're doing the COVID test first, but if it comes back negative then, because I've had some people recently that went through that and then they get the flu and then they get the pneumonia until they get it down to what they have. So, it's not like they're just going, well, they don't have COVID, so we're not going to test them anymore.
Right, exactly. I mean, the idea is to figure out what they actually do have so that they can give a correct diagnosis and then, of course, treatment options.
That's if people are going to the hospital. If people are just going to their testing sites and they get a negative, then they're not getting.
Correct. If it's just a COVID-19 testing site.
Right.
That's all it is.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. But then, they, if they continue to be ill, they may go back to their, their provider, their medical provider and get a flu test. So, any other questions on the flu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Denise, that test that was going to test for COVID and two flus, that will delineate which of the three you have, not just that you have something, hopefully?
Correct. Okay. So, you know, in terms of trying to end on a, on a positive note, the best way to prevent illness is to avoid being exposed to illness, right? It doesn't matter if it's flu, COVID, a cold, your goal is to avoid being exposed to it so you can not, not get sick. So, the same advice follows for all three of those illnesses, is you're going to wash your hands with soap and water, avoid touching your eyes, nose, mouth with unwashed hands, stay at home when you're sick, avoid close contact of others, especially if you're not feeling well, cover your cough or sneeze with a tissue or sleeve, clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces. And then, for those that feel uncomfortable, for them to wear a mask in public settings. So, those are all the areas where people have a personal decision on what to do. And all public health does in any instance here is make recommendations. That's all we have done, that's all we will continue to do. We don't require anything. And I think it's important again to state, because people seem to have a perception that we require things or that we're going to. We don't, we don't have the authority to do that. So, we operate within our authority.
Can we talk about that monoc, all right, so, a couple of, a month ago, a couple of months ago, and I think they talked about it at that press conference with the hospitals, there is a treatment early, for early onset COVID, once you're, you're, once you got your test back and you're positive. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services deployed a team of seven medical staff professionals to Bullhead City to assist clinical staff at WARMC in providing monoclonal antibody infusions to COVID-positive patients. The goal of the infusion is to reduce the severity of COVID symptoms and help prevent hospitalization. And I believe it's been very, very successful. It's been around for a year. It's, it's really not new. The federal government is going to more rural counties, training them how to do that and providing it. And I'm, I'm just surprised that not more people know about it. That, you know, again, education, for example, a couple of friends of mine, a husband and wife, around my age, were tested positive. He has some underlying conditions. I told them about this, they had never heard of it. So, they went and they got it, they both qualified. You can either, originally, you had to get referred by your doctor, but this is what I hear. Doctors are not referring because it's in the test process a year. And I did some research, I haven't seen anybody who got sick or died from this monoclonal, maybe you have different information. It's, and, and it's supposed to stop and it's been, you know, it's been successful. So, when, the reason I tell you this story is because when this county called my friends for the contact tracing, told them that they have to quarantine, which they already knew, they told them that they had this infusion. And the county didn't know what they were talking about. So, I'm just saying, shouldn't some of the part, shouldn't some of the process of the county, when they're doing this contact tracing, talk about these treatments that are out there that, I mean, definitely people don't know about?
Sure.
And if their, if their doctors won't refer them, the hospital will vet them. And I think that's kind of where everything gets a little weird. But again, you know, we're in this thing and they're saying that the vaccines are still being tested, everyone should get it, but yet this treatment that could stop people from dying and end up in the hospital is being kind of swept under the rug. And I don't understand why.
Supervisor Angus, I, we, I did check this morning, actually, based on your question. And our investigators have been instructed to give the HHS number, phone number for individuals to contact, and then that is a screening tool to determine whether or not those people, and I realize it may not have happened.
That is a long ways around, because it has to be done within the first seven to ten days. So, if they call HHS, forget it, they'll never hear back. They just called the hospital. They are ready for it. They will screen, they will decide. You can call your doctor, but I, I think it's very important, or else, what are we doing when we call people up to contact trace? The gentleman this morning said that no one, you know, let him know that he had been exposed. And I know that's hard and it's a human's task, I get that. But what are we, what are we doing for our contact tracing besides saying, okay, we know that you've tested positive? Like when I got it a year and a half ago, the same information, you know?
Hasn't changed.
It's the same information.
It is, correct.
But so, we, we have so much more information.
We do Supervisor Angus, but also keep in mind that we're not medical doctors. So, we don't, we don't diagnose and we don't create treatment plans.
Right, I'm not saying that you should. I'm just saying that, wouldn't, I mean, I'm asking the board, wouldn't it be a good thing for the county to just at least say, there are treatments out there, we recommend, just like we recommend that we, they get shots and vaccines, we recommend you call your doctor, ask about this, see if you're a candidate?
Right.
It seems like an easy thing and I think a lot of people are getting very sick and maybe dying because they don't know about this. And that's, that concerns me.
Certainly. And we can certainly look to see what information we can share, because there's only really one treatment that's been approved by the FDA, and that's the remdesivir. The monoclonal antibody treatment is an EUA. So, there are.
What's that mean?
Yeah, the emergency use authorization.
Okay.
And again, we rely on medical providers to diagnose and to create treatment plans for their patients. So, we can certainly outline what's out there. We'll be using the FDA website and we'll be using the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention website for those approved treatments, because those are the ones that are approved federally for those purposes. And if people choose to explore other options, they can certainly do so.
How would they know? I mean, for a year, we've been telling people to get something that hadn't been approved, like it was gospel. And I'm not saying that we should tell, just like you were saying before, we're just, these are just suggestions. I'm just saying, if we're doing it, if we're calling people already sick who may be in that category, who are older or have underlying obesity, diabetes, so if you've smoked your whole life, those are the kinds of things that are being approved for this.
Right.
I can't see why that wouldn't help.
Right. I mean, I think for the monoclonal antibody therapy, there are very specific conditions that this would apply to, and we can certainly promote that or at least put some information out to the public.
Yeah, that's all I ask, is that we let people know what's out there for them.
Lynn has probably more. Hi, we have, we have been sharing that information with our, our people, our investigators. We gave them information about the monoclonal antibodies. I don't know what investigator your friend may have ended up with.
I do, I'll let you know after.
Okay.
It would be just behoove everyone to go over it again. Maybe, don't you guys have a script that, that you go by?
Somewhat, yes. But we have shared that information. We have, when they had the teams here from HHS at WARMC and KRM C, we gave that information, said, hey, it's here, you know, there's a team here who can provide this service. We also have investigators from ADHS who are doing some investigations. They were sharing the information when, or they were supposed to have been, when they had the service from HHS at WARMC and KRM C. So, I don't know if they are continuing to, I would hope they would, but, you know, maybe that's what ended up happening. But we have educated our investigators, our nurses are aware of it, of course. So, I'm not quite sure what happened there, but hopefully that was just an exception. And, you know, I apologize that that happened, but that's, you know, not typical. So, but we, we absolutely see the value in it and we do want to share that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gould.
Don't walk away yet. Why don't you share the parameters with us and whoever's watching and then we would know what the parameters are?
If I would have grabbed my phone, I would have had it right in front of me.
Okay.
But I can tell you, off the top of my head, it's mostly based on age and then risk factors. Pretty much anyone age sixty-five and up will qualify. And then the other age groups down through age twelve, I believe. It depends on certain, certain factors. But all that information is available on the CDC HH Health and Human Services website.
Thank you.
I would hope that we have a form that they're using that is the same for every individual so that somebody's not going, oh, by the way, I heard that this is good. So, I don't care whether they missed something or not, if it's CDC or So I don't care whether they missed something or not, if it's CDC-approved, or whoever ADHS has given it to us. We shouldn't be picking up and saying, oh, we heard this is a good thing. But we have the same script for everybody and say, hey, you read this script, then they get covered with everything.
And we have to be very, just like Denise was, you know, mentioned, we have to be very careful that our investigators, that we're not providing medical advice.
Right.
So we just, you know, will mention, hey, you know what, there is this, this therapy available, and you can call your medical provider or this number to see if you qualify. So, but, you know, maybe calling the hospitals directly.
I beg of you not to give the HHS number. We all know where that's going to end up.
Anything else?
Oh, Supervisor Angus.
See numbers, we get a report from the hospitals that give us the cases positive and the deaths, and to me, they never really lined up. And I understand that it's, you know, you can't do one for one, that people don't die in the hospital. I, I get all that. But they were really far apart. So the question I, I want you to answer is, previously reported cases. So when we get a list of, of case deaths, let's say 10, 15 deaths, and it says previously reported cases, is, does that mean that it was, they're in active COVID and it was just reported? Or, like I gave you the example, if I were to get pneumonia today and die, because I was a previously reported case, is, does that go into it? Like, what's the timeframe they use for previously reported cases? I guess that's the, the bottom line question.
Well, let me give an explanation, and let me see if this clears it up for you, and for anybody else who's listening. When we report a death in the case summary and indicate, sorry, let me, uh, and indicate that it was a previously reported case, the case was reported as a case in a previous case summary, and the individual died later. So it was already reported as a case, so you saw it as case 1, 2, 3, whatever it happened to be, but that person had not passed away. So then, after, so, let's see. Yes.
Oh, they got sick and died? Or is it still in the active COVID frame?
I don't know the answer to that question. If they've been, you mean, if they've seemingly gotten healthy again and then fallen ill again?
Myself, that if I die of something tomorrow, you know, I'm not saying a car accident, or I'm murdered. I'm saying if I died of something, I end up in the hospital, and because I had been a previously reported case a year and a half ago. So is there a timeframe that they keep within, or is it just from the beginning of COVID till now, it was a previously reported case?
Well, for, for us, it was previously reported to us as a case, so not as a death. So when we report it out to you, you're going to see it as a case, but if two or three weeks down the road that person passes away, that attending physician will determine the cause of death, not, anything we say changes that. So if they determine that it was from complications of COVID, if they determine it's from pneumonia, that's what's going to be, I mean, if it's not a COVID death, we don't get it reported to us as a COVID-related death.
Hey, can you try to at least find the timeframe? Is it for, like I said, is it in the last month? Or is it from the beginning of COVID, a year and a half ago?
Right.
I just think that would be interesting and important, because the numbers just, you know, when I asked the hospitals or asked you, I was told, well, it was a HIPAA violation, you know, when they, it's always a HIPAA violation. And, and I kind of understand that, but that, that covers up a lot of unknowns that I think is important to know.
Right. Okay. I can do that.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Item number 73. Supervisor Gould. For 74.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recently, about, over 100 of my constituents were cited for having illegal signs in the Fort Mojave area in front of their business. These are A-frame signs, and I guess you could call them sails or feathers, the vertical signs that get staked into the ground. So we did a little research and found out that those signs are not permitted in the county. But it's interesting that they're permitted in Lake Havasu City, Bullhead to extent, but I don't know about King, whether Kingman was limited or allow some of them. So I, what, the question that I wanted to ask the board was, should we have Community Development take a look, or Development Services take a look at maybe modeling a sign ordinance after the Havasu sign ordinance? I don't see the need for a permit on a sandwich board sign, nor on these flags. Some rules would be handy to keep them out of the right of way. Don't block, don't block the view of traffic on your own property. These be on-premises signs. Tim could probably give you an overview of what they've come up with. But I think it's something that we need to address. I think just banning them is, is bad. And this was an anomaly. That's not how many normal citations they give out, but I'll let Tim talk about it.
You said we're not looking at right-ofways, right? We don't want anything right of way?
No, no. It's on-premises and not in the right of way.
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Gould, or Supervisors. First off, I do have to apologize for the 100 citations that, or so, that were issued in the area. They were in, for the most part, they were in error, so first I want to apologize. We, we are going through one by one and actually correcting those. So just to let the board know, that, that is not something typically that we, we focus on. That is, when it comes to code enforcement, that is one of the, the least of our priorities. We, we are more after the, the more egregious violations. This situation that came up has been addressed, and we're, we're going through it and actually writing letters of apology, apology to those business owners that received them erroneously. So first of all, I want you all to know that we are addressing that and taking care of that. We did, looking at this and speaking with Supervisor Gould, we, we went through and looked at both, not only Havasu, but Bullhead City and Kingman. Mojave County has just, in our zoning ordinance, we've just prohibited A-frames. We'd be happy to go in, look at, we've actually gone in and looked at what some of the other cities have allowed. For the most part, they're, they're allowed with a permit, or just as a, as a temporary sign, they can be put up as part of the ordinance. We'd be happy to go in, look at that, and propose some language to bring back to the board for your approval.
I guess my question on that is, we were talking about right-ofways. If it's not going the right of way, and depending, I guess, my question would be, if it's a business that has a sidewalk, and now they're putting them on the sidewalk, because that's still right of way. Where are they putting this sign at that I'm having a problem if I don't get it?
And, thank you, Chairman Johnson. If it's in the right of way, and especially for a number of these businesses that were cited, that's an issue with ADOT, and that's outside of our jurisdiction as far as code enforcement goes. It would be, likely would be inside the right of way on their property, but not impeding their parking lot, probably in, in some landscaping or something within their, their personal property.
Don't we have a, isn't there so much sign space that we give people?
There is. And my understanding is that this is more dealing with your, your temporary signs, your A-frame, sandwich boards, the, the flags that you'll see posted out there. That's my understanding is, those, we do allow, yes, you're correct, Chairman Johnson, for permanent signage, we do have that included in our ordinance, and we do also allow for, for temporary signs under six feet, six square feet in size and that. But, yeah, we, we permit for, for permanent, and, and we do allow for some temporary signs. However, A-frames were specifically prohibited by our ordinance.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I have a problem with is all these things that are temporary, never are temporary. You know, they put the flags up, or the A-frame up, and it just stays there forever, and you, and you get a, you know, bad-looking place. I don't care. Whatever the board wants to do. Any other questions of Mr. Walsh? Need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors request that Development Services investigate a potential temporary sign program.
Motion in a second.
Chairman Johnson, if I, if I may, just for a little more direction, would it be the, the, the pleasure of the board for us to take that to planning and zoning for their review and recommendation then to the board? Any changes that we might make?
I think that would be the way to do it.
Thank you.
We have a second.
A second.
A motion in second for the discussion. Seeing none on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same say. Motion carries. Item number 75, discussion possible action. Need to set a public hearing, October 18th, 2021, to review and discuss the attached Edward Mine Memorial Justice Assistant Grant application.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Move that item 75 be adopted.
A motion in a second for the discussion. Hearing none on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Motion carries. We are adjourned.